All right, good morning, everyone. Vice President Corzo, you can call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock and we are calling our September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting to order. I'm welcome, and we will start with the clerk, who will provide information on how the public can participate in this meeting.
Thank you, Vice President Corzo. Members of the public, live interpretation of this entire meeting will be provided in Spanish. To access live interpretation services in Zoom via laptop or computer, please click the interpretation globe icon and select the Spanish language. If you're using a smartphone or tablet, please locate the three-dot menu, select interpretation, and then select the Spanish language. At this time, I would like my colleague Victor Hernandez to provide these instructions in Spanish.
Thank you, Suki. Good morning, Vice President Corzo, honorable supervisors, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Mates, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Manquilla, all county staff, members of the public, Victor Hernandez, Spanish interpreter. Buenos dias. Nos queremos dejar saber que a los miembros del público se les proporcionará interpretación en vivo de toda esta reunión en español. Para acceder al servicio de interpretación en vivo por Zoom, ya sea con una computadora, una portátil, usted tendrá que hacer clic en lo que es un icono de un globo terráqueo, es decir, un mundo que aparecerá al fondo de su pantalla, y después seleccione lo que es el idioma en español. Ahora, si usted está utilizando lo que es un teléfono inteligente o una tableta, busque el menú de tres puntos, seleccione interpretación, y luego seleccione el idioma español, y por último, usted tendrá que hacer clic en Done o Listo. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I just wanted to share that President Canapa will be here shortly, so that's why I'm running the meeting. And with that, we will now go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the pledge. Okay, thank you so much, and we will now move on to roll call.
Thank you. Supervisor Spear?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Here.
Thank you. Supervisor Mueller?
Here.
Thank you. Currently Supervisor Canapa is absent, and Supervisor Gauje will be absent for the entire meeting.
Okay, thank you. And now, we will move on to honoring the life of slash Board Member remarks. Are there any comments or remarks from my colleagues?
Yes.
Supervisor Spear?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I have two lives to remember this morning. The first is Marsha Leonhart, who was a really remarkable community leader in San Mateo County for decades, active in the Service League and the Commission on the Status of Women. She resided in Burlingame, was very involved in the local performing arts, and just an all-around wonderful person. She regrettably died as a result of an automobile accident. So our thoughts are with her family at this difficult time. The second person I would like to adjourn in the memory of is Pedro Gonzalez, who was the mayor and city councilman in South San Francisco for over thirteen years. Came to this country in the early nineteen-fifties from Mexico, married his wife Eldie, they had three children. He was, again, very engaged, first in the Parkinson Rec Commission and then on the City Council. He will be best known for his very convincing support for the South San Francisco Ferry Terminal, which exists today in large part because of his great advocacy. So our thoughts are with his family as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Spear. And I would like to add another, I would like to recognize the passing of another person and honor their life. This person was actually a proud member of our County of San Mateo family, Heather Ledesma. After a long and courageous battle with cancer passed recently, Heather joined the county in nineteen ninety-nine with the Health Department's prenatal to three program. She later served in health administration as a management analyst before moving to Aging and Adult Services, where she became the fiscal officer and manager for in-home support services and adult protective services. During her time there, she played a key role in creating a death review panel in partnership with the coroner's office. Heather eventually joined the county executive's office as a principal management analyst, where she focused on performance and budget. While senior services were always one of her greatest professional passions, she often spent her most fulfilling years working in the CFO's office. She often said her most fulfilling years were working in the CFO's office alongside her team. And I just want to share that when I first met Heather, it was when I had just started, and we needed a lot of guidance, my team and I. We were a new team. And Heather was a gentle and consistent support system to my team and I, so we honor her and condolences to her husband or her partner, Pat, and their children Riley and Carson. Please keep them in your hearts and prayers. And with that, we will move on to public comment. Thank you for your patience, and this portion of the agenda is set aside for members of the public to comment on matters that are within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, but that are not on the agenda for today's meetings, for matters that are listed on the consent agenda and for matters that are set for closed session. Public comment will be limited to one minute, and with that, I will hand it over to the clerk to begin public comment.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We have seven speakers so far, and just to reiterate, if you're speaking on a consent agenda and also general public comment, you can only speak once. So I'll start off with John Ma, followed by Christopher Ulrich, who's going to be speaking on consent item number seven.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is John Ma. I'm a surgeon from San Francisco, grew up in Belmont, practiced at San Mateo Medical Center. I came to urge a study, perhaps a special committee, to look at e-bike and pedestrian safety in San Mateo County. I've been up in Marin, and we've led the way. We understood the dangers associated with e-bikes. It was a really tragic, but fortunately, a patient who survived that catalyzed both Marin statewide and national action. The American College of Surgeons, the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons have all issued e-bike safety statements, and it was really the tragedy in Burlingame in August, where a chain of events that began with an eleven-year-old riding a Class II e-bike that collided with a car going onto the sidewalk and then taking the life of a four-year-old. So just what we did in Marin was we created a special committee to create an outward-facing educational program that I think has had important results. So I hope that you might consider that to protect pedestrians and e-bike riders in San Mateo County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christopher Ulrich, speaking on consent item number seven, followed by Sheriff Christina Corpus on item number seven.
May we defer until item seven is actually discussed?
I just want to note, item seven is currently on the consent agenda, so that is, this would be the time to dis-
It would be appropriate to comment now.
Madam President, I'm going to, at the request of the sheriff, take it off consent and put it on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Perfect.
All right, so we will hold off comments for number seven until that item is heard. So next speaker is Michael Great. Thank you.
Yes, I'm here as a living testimony at Retraining Village. Help people to the point where they're able to find themselves, to be rehabilitated in society. I don't know you people, but I was a guy that was removed from society for twenty-five years, not under criminal stature, but under civil stature. Allegedly supposed to have been afflicted with a mental illness that prompts society to say, hey, we need to remove this guy from society. And because I didn't participate in the treatment program, I spent a lot of years there, but I actually found myself in Retraining Village. They rescued me from a very depleted life, and I'm here as a living testimony, after seventeen months, I'm here representing Retraining Village and all the support that I needed to reestablish myself after being removed for a quarter century. Here I am today. I represent Retraining Village.
Thank you, Mr. Great. And for the record, Supervisor Canapa is now present at nine eleven a.m., and will be presiding over the meeting. We'll continue with speakers from chambers, Haley Crum, followed by Jonathan Jimenez.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. We're coming before you because we have an urgent need. Yes, of course. We have an urgent need in the community to retain Retrain the Village. We've had several closed-door meetings, but it's become escalated due to a probate situation, and I did ask for some financial support on both ends. We do have a sovereignty plan, but I just want to know, do you guys want Retrain the Village in your community? Because I need your help. I never thought I would have to stand at this podium, and I don't have any complaints. Can't beat me at being humble, but we do need to have some support financially to bridge, and then we're going to go into, we got licensed to become a substance abuse license from the state of California for our sovereignty in the future. And I apologize. And we also have a plan to do the transitional piece that the president wants homeless and to transition with a preempt of becoming clean and sober. And if not, you can go to the shelter. So I need your support. Please call me. Let me know. And the request is with Lisa Gauje. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Through the county executive, can we make sure that we reach out to Retrain the Village? I understand Retrain the Village has been in the county for many decades, had the ability to tour. If you could reach out to the CEO, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay?
Yeah, thank you, President Canapa. I have met with Ms. Crum, who I actually know well and liked a lot, so we'll work with her to see what we can do.
Great, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Sure. The next speaker is Jonathan Jimenez, followed by Jim Lawrence.
Hello, how you guys doing today?
You can move the mic up.
I came here to represent Retraining the Village. I'm one of the residents, also employed by Retraining the Village, and, you know, on behalf of the men that live there and have been residents there, along with all the underserved people that have been in and out of there, there's been so much success within our program, stuff that is not seen, stuff that is not heard, and there's countless hours of work that is being done to help train these men that are coming either from the streets or from prison. But at the end of the day, these men do deserve an extra chance because they are coming into this community, and I feel that we are doing our part to pour into these men so they can come back and just be reintegrated back into society and just be productive. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Two additional speakers from chambers, Jim Lawrence, followed by our last speaker, Anthony Mitchell.
Good morning. Maguire Correctional Facility. The elevators have not been operating since, I believe, June nineteenth. We're told that it'll be November before they can be fixed. Now, Maguire is run by Public Works, so the sheriff has no responsibility in the facility. So I'm asking you, can we get Public Works to expedite this? November, just think of the families, the brothers, the sisters, the mothers who can't visit. I think it's very important, so I really would appreciate your help there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Through the county executive, do we have an update on the elevators?
Yeah, I can give that to you right now. As you, as this board knows, older elevators are very difficult to repair because of the difficulty in finding appropriate parts, and that's really the key. The construction firm for the product is now under contract, and we'll get started in December, but this is what we've been doing. The county dispatched all available resources to restore the service to Maguire Visitation Elevators since it went out in July. These efforts have included directing the current provider to assign additional technicians, dispatching a third-party consultant to provide input and guidance, commissioning a contractor that will be replacing the Maguire elevators, and fortunately, none of these efforts have worked, and that is the problem with older elevators and trying to find the parts. So in addition, the elevator has been prioritized to be the first elevator that is actually replaced, not repaired. We're going to fix this once and for all by replacing it, and that'll take place in December.
All right, so in December, it looks like we'll have one elevator operating. Is that correct, or December, January?
Well, that visitation elevator would be the first one that we do, yeah, so it's going to be completely new.
Okay, that's good news. Is there any other public comments?
Yes, one more speaker from chambers, and then we'll take speakers from Zoom, Anthony Mitchell.
Good morning, counsel. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you today. My name is Anthony Mitchell, and we are, our firm is Echo Green Solutions. We are registered with the federal government Department of Energy and also trade professionals with Pacific Gas Electric Company. I'm here today coming before you to request an information session with the leaders here for the County of San Mateo. We are working currently with Contra Costa County, Monterey County, Inyo County, Mono County, and several other counties throughout the state of California, dealing with funds that you guys automatically pay into a program. About ten percent of every county bill that goes to your utilities gets pooled by the Public Utility Commission, and our contract is with the PUC to get those dollars and spend them back on the county. We've been trying to work with Parks and Recreation and Public Works and Facilities and Energy Services and Sustainability, but right now, we can get up to four million dollars per property, per facility, for the county of each one of your properties. Those funds can go to the EV charging, which is extremely expensive for counties, where you guys are getting these mandates, where's that money going to come from? We can get access to funds that are both state, federal, and utility funds, never mind utility money for renewables and then reduction. So I'm just here to ask for a meeting if that's possible.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go now to online remote comments.
That's great, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you. As a reminder, the consent agenda begins at item four through forty-four, and if you're speaking for item seven, please hold those comments until that item is called up separately for discussion. We have five hands raised. We'll start with X, followed by Martin Fox. X, please unmute and begin.
Yes, well, I would like item number thirteen pulled from the consent agenda, so I can speak on that later. Second, I want to comment on the fact that now the county has an ethics code that was placed, put in place last winter, and Board of Supervisors should not be allowed and they should be held accountable if they direct a comment to a public speaker after speaking. Last week, last, two weeks ago, Corzo called me hateful. Couple months ago, Mueller actually said, I'm not supposed to comment, but I'm going to comment on this person. These people need to be held accountable. And second, last fifteen seconds, I'd like to set up silence in honor of Charlie Kirk. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
No! I said I wanted silence for the end of my time!
Next speaker.
What a douche!
Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Can you please take her, can you please take her off Zoom? Thank you. Next speaker.
We're going now to, well, why is it frozen? Let me just try to... Mr. Clerk, could you please try to disable my mouse? It's not letting me mute.
I'm not sure what's happening, but let me, let me see, one second. Okay, I've removed the permission, so please proceed. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Martin Fox, please unmute and begin. Mr. Clerk, if you could take over, I'm going to reset my Zoom.
Okay. Mr. Fox, please proceed.
Good morning, President Canapa, my fellow veteran county attorney, Mr. Niblin, Supervisors Corzo, Mueller, and our absent Supervisor Gautier, county executive, Mr. Callagie. Thank all of you for your service to the county. Please make the county safer and healthier for persons living with serious mental illness and their families by making the reintroduction and passage of the repeal of the Land of the Pete Short Act a top county state legislative priority. Full implementation of sent Bill Forty-three enhanced to include bipolar disorder, a top county health department priority, and defunding disability rights, California and the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, who defend the immoral Land of the Pete Short Act, a top county legislative priority. California's Land of the Pete Short Act of nineteen sixty-seven is one of the ten worst mental health treatment laws in the fifty states. Please make it the highest county state legislative priority to have it repealed and replaced completely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox.
We'll now go to Andrew Boston, followed by Kristalyn. Andrew, please unmute.
Thanks, and good morning, Supervisors. My name is Andrew Boston from Save Silcove, which is along the unincorporated area on Long Coast. Across California, communities manage landslides by keeping water out of the ground. In Palos Verdes, for example, they've installed more than thirty dewatering wells across Abalone Cove and Portuguese Bend to slow the slide by pumping water out. And Silcove, we've been doing the opposite. For years, hundreds of thousands of gallons have been pumped into the ground through broken water and sewer lines, speeding up the very movement we all worry about. We appreciate the work you've done so far to address these challenges, and we're not asking for miracles. At a minimum, we need basic stormwater management to keep water off the slide. That's the quickest, most effective way to reduce risk for our neighborhood and to protect the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. And with rainy season approaching, every storm without proper drainage compounds, the problem, think of it like health, we all know we can't live forever, but at least I tell my children to eat their vegetables and exercise to stay strong. So we're not looking for a miracle cure. We just need to stop binging on a diet of broken pipes and runoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristalyn, followed by Stuart Highland. Kristalyn, please proceed.
Kristalyn, Coastside Chamber on Turbo Speed. Dear Honorable Supervisors of San Mateo County, we write to express our deep concern regarding the ongoing immigration enforcement actions in our state and region, and to affirm our unwavering support for the immigrant communities that are the backbone of our coastide and San Mateo County economy and culture. We stand firmly against the deportation tactics currently being employed by the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement, particularly those that are predatory in nature and that spread fear among the people in our community. We believe our shared prosperity depends on standing up for the values that make the coastide and San Mateo County and the communities within vibrant, inclusive, and a welcoming place to live, to do business. As such, we affirm the following principles. Inclusiveness and support of all immigrants, we support policies and practices that ensure dignity and respect, an opportunity for immigrants regardless of status, recognition of our history, equal rights in the workplace, condemnation of harmful enforcement practices, acknowledgement of immigrant contributions. And the Coastside Chamber stands with the county and Board of Supervisors in opposing unjust deportation practices. Thank you for all you do. Sincerely, the Coastside Chamber Board of Directors.
Thank you. We'll now go to our last speaker, Stuart Highland.
Good morning, President Canapa and Supervisors. I am Stuart Highland. Our family lives here in East Palo Alto, and I'm speaking today about the delayed repair of the elevators in Maguire County Jail. I started a petition to repair the elevators on August twenty-fifth, and as of last night, there are a hundred and fifty-six signatures, including some local elected representatives. As you know, it's difficult to have our loved ones who need our support for their successful return to society so close and be unable to see them face to face. It's good to hear Mr. Callagie speak about some improvements, but I just want to remind the board to stay on top of this, because on the Public Works website, in the archived project bid section, the project for Maguire Elevator is missing key related documents, including the record of bid opening, which would list competing contractors or who has won the contract for the scope of work. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let me repeat that again. Action to set the agenda and approve the consent agenda items. I want to thank all those who shared their comments. We'll now take action to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda. My understanding, Supervisor Spear, is that you requested an item to be pulled. Is that correct?
Yes, I would like item seven, at the request of the sheriff, to be placed on the regular agenda.
Okay, so we will, we will do that, colleagues. Are there any other items that you would like pulled? With that, I may have a motion to move the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Motion is to move item number seven to regular and approve consent agenda items. I'll take the roll call. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Canapa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed, with Supervisor Gauje being absent.
All right, so we're now to item one. Today's agenda items are limited and focused mainly on the budget. We'll start with item one, which is a new agreement with Workday to provide expanded human resources, related services over a ten-year period. This is brought to us by the Controller and Human Resources. CEO Callagie will be presenting this item.
No, HR Director Rosio Kirkson will present this item.
Thank you. Good morning, President, members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Justin, Mr. Manquilla. Happy to be here this morning. I'm Rosio Kirkson, HR director.
Please, thank you.
Of course. Happy to join you this morning. I'm also joined by our outstanding HR and Controller's Office teams, right here. Today, we are requesting your board's approval to enter into a ten-year agreement with Workday for enhanced HR and payroll services that include several new modules, including learning, which will become our new learning management system, Pecan Employee Voice, which will serve as our new employee engagement tool, and Workday Help, which is an AI tool to assist employees with accessing HR knowledge and information. We're also requesting to your board to waive the RFP process for this enterprise platform, and if approved by your board, the new agreement will supersede our existing agreement with Workday. Before I go into the specifics, I do want to provide a little bit of background regarding our contract with Workday. Prior to twenty fifteen, the county had antiquated HR payroll legacy system that had many custom-built solutions, offered limited integrations, and required manual processes. Fortunately, the organization recognized that continuing with this infrastructure was not sustainable, so in twenty twelve, the county issued an RFP for a new system. Workday was selected, and after an eighteen-month implementation process, the county went live with Workday in twenty fifteen. And true to San Mateo County's innovative spirit, we were the first California county and the second county in the nation to use Workday. We selected this platform because of its modern technology, cloud-based platform, on-demand access, employer, employee and manager self-service, workflow capabilities, reporting and integrations. And as this slide notes, we started with core HR and payroll and included various modules that are listed there, such as benefits, performance management, compensation, and many others. And over the last ten years, we've continued to expand our use of the system. We added a mobile app, we have added analytics for data-driven decision-making, we have workforce dashboards and reporting, and we've automated our expense reimbursement process as well as tuition reimbursement. And I do want to note that Workday has been able to meet the changing needs of our work environment with union negotiations and employee benefit offerings having become more and more complex. Workday has been able to handle these changes while meeting the county's HR and payroll demands with consistency and accuracy, which is vital. The system has increased business flexibility, which allows our employees to focus on mission-critical services for our community. This slide shows some of the new features we will have that center on and- This slide shows some of the new features we will have that center on improving the employee experience, including learning, Pecan Employee Voice, and Workday Help. For the learning management system, we did go out to RFP in January of this year, and we evaluated four LMS proposals and systems, and ultimately, Workday was determined to be the best platform. It has various AI capabilities, career pathing, skills, competency management, messaging tools, and advanced data analytics. Employee Voice Pecan will enhance communication, engagement, and retention. This engagement and feedback tool will be used to conduct employee surveys. Workday Help will be added in twenty twenty-six to enhance the employee experience and boost productivity. When employees have an HR question, the system will generate information that's accessible and easy to understand, such as articles, videos, and other resources. And as I previously noted, this is AI-generated, so it is something that we'll evaluate closely and go slowly in that process. And with many of the AI features, we do have the capability of turning them on and off. So certainly, when the organization's ready, we can move forward with that. Some key benefits of having Workday and consolidating HR services into one source and one platform will be the ease for our employees. It will create transparent career paths and skills development, improve efficiencies, and offer business insights, and enhance informed decision-making. Another benefit of Workday continues to be the robust self-service capabilities, which empower our employees to manage their own personnel records, benefit selections, learning, and payroll preferences. This not only streamlines administrative processes, but also makes onboarding and ongoing employment more seamless and engaging, enhancing the employee experience from day one. Lastly, Workday does offer regular updates and enhancements, so there's a continuous improvement and better performance. Following the issuance of the LMS RFP, the Learning Management RFP, we began contract negotiations with Workday, and this gave us an opportunity to renegotiate our existing agreement along with adding new services. As shown on this slide, the ten-year contract is, year one, will be one point six million. Year two, it's two million, and this is when all of the new modules will be launched. Thereafter, we'll see a two percent annual increase, and the total contract for the ten-year period is twenty-one million. I do want to note the renegotiated annual increase is lower than our existing contract. Currently, the contract that we have, we would have seen a five percent increase in twenty twenty-five, and thereafter, we would have had three annual renewals, and the annual renewals would have been three percent plus CPI. So over five, our estimates would be over five percent. So this two percent is a lower rate. And in order to get this lower rate, Workday did request a ten-year agreement, and after discussions with procurement, our Information Services Department, and our County Executive's Office, it was agreed that since Workday is part of the county's infrastructure and continues to meet our needs, a long-term agreement would be in alignment with county and industry standards. Having a long-term agreement will offer the county a secure, reliable, and flexible HR payroll platform for years to come while getting the best value for the organization and the community we serve. Our HR payroll platform continues to evolve. It's a human-centric, future-ready system that helps drive employee and organizational success. And like San Mateo County, it keeps getting better and better. With that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and thank you for your board's consideration.
Colleagues, are there any questions? Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we have data on how much, how often and how much staff actually use Workday. I know personally, I use it almost every single day for multiple things, but just so that folks understand, it is a big investment, but I think it's very much necessary. So do we have that?
I agree with you that it is a system that is being used on a regular basis. I know that I'm definitely going into the system on a regular basis, and I'm sure the team here would also indicate that. Certainly, there are some modules that are used more than others, but employees can go in and they can check their payroll pay slips, so that's certainly available to them. They can go in if they want to see what the, contact someone within the organization and want to see what the organizational structure looks like. They can do that, access other employees' contact information. It's also for the county provides us to have our workflow via Workday, so employees are going in to approve things and request items. So it is a system that's used on a regular basis. And as I mentioned, I'm going in there regularly. I'm taking a look at the data, our workforce data, and analyzing it, and it definitely helps us in terms of making decisions for the organization.
Thank you. Let me pull up my notes, oop, let me pull up my notes here. I think there was something else I wanted to ask. Here we go. Actually, no, you answered all my questions during your presentation. It was very thorough, but I'll just wrap up and say that, you know, I compare this to what Epic is doing for all of our public health, all of our health staff, and it's a tool that they need to be on par with other private hospitals and to, and it just benefits the community, it benefits them, it helps them do their work. And to me, Workday is exactly that, but for HR and for every single employee, because every employee of the county uses Workday. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Spear? No, you know, I have a couple of questions, Rosio. Can you speak a little bit to the length of the contract? You know, I'm really concerned over a period of ten years and the money that were expended. So within those ten years, you know, my understanding is it's not open up for an RFP, it's just that we're awarding a ten-year agreement, is that correct?
That's correct. When we initially selected Workday, we did go through an RFP, and so with this request, we are requesting a new agreement or essentially an extension of it. And as I did mention, with regards to the term, in having our discussions with procurement and with the County Executive's Office, given that this is infrastructure and typically is, it would be something that would be long-term, that we all were in agreement that it would be in the county's best interest to move forward with this. And then I do want to note that when we initially transitioned to Workday, in terms of the implementation cost, it was six point seven million dollars at the time, so back in twenty thirteen or so, twenty thirteen, fourteen, six point seven million dollars. And then we had ten dedicated staff, I think it may have been more, where we pulled our staff out of their regular assignments, and we had them designated as, in their respective area, focused on that to assist with the transition. So it's a tremendous undertaking, and if the system were not, was not working for us, and if we believed that it would not meet our future needs, we would absolutely be requesting that we go to market with this.
And so the previous agreement, was it ten years or was it five years that you had previous to, what was the previous agreement?
So over the years, I'd have to take a look to see what the initial term, but we've brought it back several times to your board to extend. So with the initial agreement, I believe it came to your board twenty thirteen, and I think we've done five, thank you, five years. And over the years, we've been adding new modules, new modules to it.
And so can I tell you, the reason I think five years is probably appropriate is really it gives us the flexibility. We don't know what's going to happen in the marketplace, whether someone acquires the company, if there are different things that happen that are beyond sort of, you know, market control. We don't know if, you know, Workday is, there are issues. I mean, it happens all the time in corporate spaces. So the one thing that, you know, I'm pondering is this ten-year number. I can understand how you arrive there. I just think for future boards, where I get concerned about is you're essentially locked in for a ten-year agreement. Is there, are there any way out of these agreements? Can you explain potentially?
Thank you for that, thank you for that question, President Canepa. So when we were negotiating with Workday, the team also brought that up in terms of, one of our initials requests was that we do a five-year contract with the option to extend an additional five years. So that was our initial proposal, and they came back to us indicating that in order to lock in that two percent annual increase, it would have to be a ten percent, it would have, I'm sorry, it would have to be a ten-year, ten-year contract. And apparently, with Workday, that is their standard now. When they go into negotiations, they're looking at ten-year contracts. And in terms of the viability of the company, as you know, it is Bay Area-based.
Let me interrupt you. Why do you think they do that? Why, why in terms of their business practice would they, why is it advantageous for them to have us there for ten years, although there's a reduction in price? Do you, is there sort of any add-ons that they can add within the agreement over the period of ten years?
I do think they want our business, right? And they want us to continue with that. Yeah, I think that's just their, their practice now in terms of what they're doing with the ten-year agreement.
President Canepa, if I may, and the boards could certainly, you know, direct staff to enter a five-year contract, but it would just be at a higher rate, that's all. So we are looking for economies of scale here, and, but whatever the board, you know...
So what is the price difference then between a five-year and a ten-year agreement? What's, in terms of numbers, what's the sum of the total?
So I can't tell you that, so it would be the two percent versus five, annual increase two percent or five to five point seven percent if we did the three percent plus the CPI.
Mr. Mankeah?
But I think I have, once, if you give me one second, I think I have a chart that the team prepared.
While, while Ms. Kirkson is looking for that. I just wanted to note that the contract does in fact include some termination provisions. It would be somewhat standard, termination when there's a breach, and also a termination if there was a bankruptcy or an assignment for the benefit of creditors. So to talk about the viability of the company, there are protections that have been negotiated and included in the agreement that are standard there.
Standard, okay.
And unfortunately, I don't have that chart. Initially, we were going to include it, but it did show that at the end of the term, toward the end of the term of the contract, we would be generating, the cost wouldn't be as high. So we would see some savings.
Great. And when do you need to begin this agreement? You know, one of the things I'm thinking of, colleagues, is maybe bringing this back to a future meeting, because I don't understand really the numbers behind of the decision we're trying to make. Can you speak to that?
So the current renewal with Workday, so right now, we have an existing agreement with Workday. The payment is due in September, and then we have the option to do three-year renewals with them at the three percent plus CPI. And so if, so our payment is coming up, it's this month, and so it, so we would need to pay them with this new agreement. If we delay it, which your board certainly can do, hold off on it, there will be cost implications.
Are we assuming there's cost implications? Because if the vendor really wants our business, I would assume that they wouldn't want to do that, correct? It's not in their interest, right?
Of course, they want our business, yes.
Supervisor Spear.
So if I understand correctly, we expended a lot of money for building this system. We had dedicated staff to do that, so there was a cost of six million-plus staff.
Yes.
Which you don't have that staff dedicated for that purpose any longer, or you do?
If we were to move, if we were to select a new, a new vendor, and we were to move forward with the implementation, we would have to identify what that implementation team would look like. So we would have the implementation costs, and then we would have to have the staffing also.
So you don't have that dedicated staffing now with Workday, correct?
No, no.
So there's that added cost associated with it. When I saw the contract for ten years, I reached out and said, what happens if they go belly up? And you made it clear that we had the provision that Mr. Niblin spoke about.
Yes.
So, you know, that takes care of that situation. If you are satisfied with their work product, and we're getting a discount by doing a ten-year contract, it seems to me that it's a prudent step. If we're paying, I mean, the only thing I regret is that you're bringing this to us at the very last moment, right? And I don't know if that's because of the negotiations, which you're nodding, yes it is. So it seems like if we don't take this action today, we will be paying three percent plus two percent for the next year at the very least. Is that correct?
Five percent.
All right. So, you know, that's really our decision. But maybe in terms of negotiating with them, it would be great if it could have happened a little bit earlier, so we weren't up against this time limit in terms of negotiations.
Yes, I would agree with that, Supervisor Spear. Since we went out to RFP for the LMS and decided that Workday was the best vendor for that, that's when the contract negotiation started, and then that's when we decided that let's look at it holistically and take a look at the entire agreement, especially if we were going to move to the new element, new learning management system. We would want to have the Workday for long-term rather than that, you know, that shorter-term, because it is an investment also on our part to transition to a new system, even if it's in the best interest of the county.
Supervisor Corzo.
Oh, sorry. This is Alisa Okada, Deputy Director. She'll speak to the costs.
So thank you, Supervisor, President Canepa. Although this is not a new ten-year contract that would have followed these numbers, so it's not exactly, you know, the next ten years, but in our existing contract, if we were to stay on that path, the total would have been twenty-four million dollars for the next ten years, and that would have been with the new modules that we're adding. The existing cost for the current functionality that we have for the next ten years would have been twenty-one million. So in the contract negotiation, it seems, based on our current contract versus the negotiations, feels like we're getting the new modules for free. So that was why the ten-year contract and the new negotiations to supersede our existing contract was a good deal for the county.
Any additional questions? Yeah.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that, based on, you know, how I've used it with my team, I see Workday, I've never used Workday until I came to the county, and it's the best product I've ever seen, and I've actually seen it just while, in the three, almost three years I've been here, added functionality, and I think, you know, if that has been a trend since we started working with them, I think it probably, it's very likely, like increases staff productivity, adds a ton of training modules, and it is a tool that benefits every single department. So, you know, with learning that we're essentially getting the new modules for free, that I think is a good deal for the county. I know these contracts that are long in time, and, and, don't get me wrong, I have been one to question long-term contracts as well. I've done so in the past on several occasions. I've, I've done so in the past on several occasions. But I think, I do think this one, just like Epic, big investments, but in terms of staff productivity, the way that it benefits not just staff, but the community because that's freeing up time for staff to do other things, I think is a very worthy investment.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Please do. Please click, raise hand to comment for item number one, the agreement. We have one hand raised with Dan Stejink. Please proceed.
Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Yes. Excellent. My name is Dan Stejink. I strongly urge you not to commit to a 10-year relationship with this company. Borders, Blockbuster, Toys R Us, Radio Shack, Sears, Pier One, these are all companies that went out of business in the last 10 years. There's voluminous evidence in the venture capital world that whenever someone comes to you asking for a long-term contract, they're taking that to the bank and they're trying to get financing for that. They'll say, hey, we've got a 10-year commitment from the richest county in California to do this. Can you give us a loan to build this product? You are the big fish. You hold all the cards. You can change the 2% to 3% to 1% next year just by asking for it right now. There is no deadline. It's fictitious. I strongly urge you do not commit to this contract.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you, Dan.
I move to approve item one.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corso?
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you, and President Canepa?
No.
Okay. Motion passes 311 with Supervisor Canepa casting a no vote and Supervisor Gocher being absent.
All right, thank you very much. Now on to the budget. Item two involves four separate actions related to final budget revisions to the fiscal year 2025, 2026, approved recommended budget. This brought, this is brought to us by County Executive Callagie. Mr. Callagie.
Thank you so much, President Canepa and members of the board. It's an honor to bring you the, the revised September budget for fiscal year 25 and 27. As we look at the, at the quote, the gratification of wealth is not found in mere possession or in lavish expenditure, but it's wise application. And that's what has paid off for this county, the wise application of this board of the funding that we have. And as we look at the budget landscape, we, we have some uncertainty. And it's no surprise to this board that we have some uncertainty at the federal level and at the state level. And our mission here is to safeguard the essential services of all residents and respond quickly to changes. And in this day and age, we are faced with, with more and more intricate challenges that, that really stretch us. The adjustments to Medicaid that flow down to Medi-Cal illustrates how change is outside of our control can cascade to the local level and have major, major impacts, as we'll see in a few minutes. A shift of the funding split could significantly increase the county's share of cost. Likewise, the ongoing lack of the full vehicle license fee repayment. And, and let me just be clear on this. This to me is, the vehicle license fee is one of the most potentially catastrophic situations we face probably in the history of this county, the takeaway of vehicle license fees. This year, as you know, it was reduced considerably, but what's looming is the takeaway of those fees entreating San Mateo County unlike any other county. So the county will continually, closely track federal and state developments and forecast potential impacts and prepare contingency plans to protect critical services and infrastructure. But in doing so, it'll force the board to make very, very difficult decisions moving forward if those do come to fruition. In the fiscal year 25 through 27 recommended budget, we really focus on, on some of these policy shifts and economic uncertainty. And through the board's fiscal stewardship and, and ongoing safeguarding, we will get through this and we will move forward and will continue to serve and deliver the highest quality services possible to residents. I'm confident of that. And it's, it's our job to provide that stable environment, but it will be a challenge. So ultimately, these September revisions ensure counties prepared for the 25, 26 fiscal year. And the following presentation will kind of lay out those revisions, starting with position changes. Let's go to those. As you can see, the June budget was projected at 4.9 billion with 5,865 positions across all county funds. And the September revisions increased the June budget by 6.10 million and 24 positions. Most of that 6.10 million is really carryover from CPI and I'll talk a lot of, I'll, I'll talk about that in the future slides. So the revised budget that we're looking at right now in front of this board is 5.5 billion, including 5,889 positions. The general fund portion is 4 billion with 4,725 positions. Okay, going on to staffing adjustments, we can see them here. And we'll talk a little bit about these net 24 positions, six of them with the DA's office. One position was added due to the workload increase of Prop 36, which continues to really act as a landslide on the, on the county attorney's office and their budget. Four positions were added, one for public service specialist, two victim advocates and one social worker. And this is in regard to the Family Justice Center that we're very, very excited to get up and running and really moving forward with that very quickly. And then one position was added as a legal office assistant to assist with overall workload increase in the department. And I've got to say that anyone who knows DA Waxstaff will, will, will tell you that he is very stingy with, you know, his office budget.
It's a good thing.
And, yeah, and, but in a good way because he protects that budget incredibly and, and only asks for things that he absolutely, absolutely needs. The sheriff, the regional threat assessment, one criminal intelligence manager unclassified was added to better align staffing needs for the sheriff's office, Northern California Regional Intelligence Center, otherwise known as the NICRIC. Using the State Homeland Security Grant Program. County health, we had eight. And environmental services was plus two. One position added environmental health specialist, four, to assist with the EHS Tobacco Retailer Program. One position added environmental health technician, one unclassified, support the tobacco retailer program. Behavioral health services, we had six. One position added case management assessment. Two positions were added to accountant, two. And one position was added to senior accountant. Agriculture, plus six. And, and this was really a seasonal conversion. Six pest detection specialists, seasonally unclassified, were added to replace the extra help position. So they were added and they'll be going part-time, so there's really no net county cost for that. Public works, four facility. And you think about how we've grown the facilities in this county to all the hotels and the other facilities that we've purchased in order to get out of the rent obligations, but we really haven't increased our staff there to take care of those. So we have one stationary engineer and three utility worker twos. In ISD, we have one accounting, accounting support. And then a deletion of two positions, one in the controller's office and one in the health, a community program specialist. So let's talk about some of the key adjustments here. We have 307 million of final fund balance adjustments. This includes allocations of one-time projects and increases in contingencies and reserves. We have 91 million and some change, Measure K rollover, primarily due to ongoing capital projects. It's Affordable Housing Fund, Local Housing Subsidy Program, Pescadero Fire Station that rolled over that we didn't use last year, but they are expected to be all utilized or, or a great portion of it this year. Up to 75 million prefunding other post-employment benefits for future retiree benefits. And I'll talk about that in a, in a minute because I want to give Mr. Manquia incredible credit for what he's just done there. 6.68 million capital project rollover. This amount is significantly less than in recent years, obviously because we're getting the work done and these buildings are, are coming to life and, and the amount of new construction we have is, been reduced dramatically down to just a few buildings. 11.6 new capital products, primarily Tenez Beach and Flood Park Playground Facilities and Tenez Creek Beach, soon to be Horsley Beach. We had that landslide out there that not only delayed the opening, but cost us, I believe, an additional 3 million or so to try to fix that landslide. 6.7 million increase in health benefit costs to, to account for the rising insurance and this is staggering, absolutely staggering. 18.99 increase in Kaiser and 15.99 increase in Netna and Aetna. That's for six months. That's for six months of premiums. So we're seeing that and feeling the impact of that. 3.5 million in Skyway Building Project Contribution at the San Carlos Airport. And that's coming from the FAA fuel tax. And then a few offsets included two criminal justice grants in the sheriff's office, one for various state homeland security and urban area security initiative, Yowazi Grants. That totaled 150, 149,000. And then the California Board of State and Community Corrections, BSCC, the retail theft, which was 9.4 million. And I do believe that that's having an impact countywide on retail theft. I'm hearing from the DA's office and other law enforcement agency that, that that is down. So credit to all the agencies involved in that and for the state funding that. Onto the reserves. The final fund balance adjustment is 374.6 million for all funds. And as you'll recall, we have the, on a, on the board decision to increase at our recommendation the reserve funding from 10% to 15% to add stability in times of uncertainty which we're in now. And we've been able to achieve that relatively quickly and actually exceed that. Total contingencies and reserves, 668.3 million, an increase of 141 million from June, which is remarkable. The general fund contingencies and reserves now total 579.6 million, increase of 113.8 million from June. So we're sitting at 16.9% in reserves. I feel very, very good about that, especially given the uncertainty and some of the decisions that the, the board faces in the future. Now you'll also remember that we, we've increased the department reserves from 2% to 4% and the non-departmental to 6%. So, so that will take place over a five-year period. Remember, we, we did not say that they had to get there overnight for the departments, that we would get there over a five-year period. Some are there right now, some are on their way to there. Capital projects, just really quickly, and we'll, we'll talk a lot more about this when John Allen comes up to talk about the capital improvement project. But capital projects, 4.93, 4 million appropriated for capital products throughout the county includes changes of 83.3 million from June budget, a 17.6% increase primarily due to rollover. Those are the products we did not finish last year, but we're rolling them over. And all county, and this, this is exciting to me. All county capital products are fully funded in the non-departmental services budget. So Mr. Manquia has been able to somehow fund these without using bond money, saving the taxpayer dollars on the interest, which is incredible. So all the future products that we have slated, you know, in the near future here, the Pescadero Fire Station, and if we had to do what we're going to do, the, the affordable housing for the workforce, that will, that'll be paid for in cash. September revisions are highlighted, three technology projects and six construction projects. We'll talk a little bit about those. The technology projects are the Assessor County Clerk Recorder Elections Acre. And that's really on the maintenance and operations side. I think Mr. Church has done a good job getting that project up and running and, and now we're just really working on funding the maintenance and operations. The Controller's Office Tax Property, Mr. Gosa has really done a nice job keeping that system together with duct tape and, you know, and, and.
Joining him.
And I don't know what else. Sure ingenuity, but it's time to replace that system and it's important systems. That's about 17.8 million. Probably go to 20 million by, by the time all things said and done. And the Assessment Appeals Board, the new system there will be 1.5 million. The construction projects, we've spoken about some of them, the 455 County Center renovation, Redwood City will be 52 million. Don Horsley Park, Tenez Creek Beach at 3.5 million. Mitten Road property upgrades, and it's great to see that occupied now with 25 million. And we've moved out of leased space. And I've asked Robert to, and I know you haven't had an opportunity to do this because I just asked you late last night, but I really want to give the board an, an idea how much money you're saving by us moving out of these leased properties and, and utilizing the properties that you purchased at a bargain, at incredible bargain. It, it was just the timing was right. The North County Wellness Center, 113, I'm sorry, 138 million. We had like 63 million carryover on that. The Family Justice Center, we have set aside 13 million for renovations there. And the Bridgepoint Property Upgrades, another 25 million. And some of that might spill over to the, to the Family Justice Center if need be. So we'll, like I indicated, I'll have Mr. Allen talking about the five-year CIP updates in a, in a minute. But let's talk about prefunding post-employment benefits. And I just want to give incredible kudos to Mr. Manquia and his staff for coming up and engineering this because this is an incredible feat and, and will put us really fully funded with our other employee benefits, post-employment benefits. And the typical contributions are 15 to 20 million annually. By paying the 75 million upfront, we're going to be sending, we're going to be saving $10 million annually by doing this. And that comes back into the ongoing revenue of the county that we can depend on year after year. So the, the benefits of this is obviously long-term cost savings by reducing total liability, investment return growth, improved credit rating, which can lower borrowing costs, budget stability and predictability by smoothing out costs. And one of the things that I've always said, and I know this board adheres to, is the fact that our public employees have made a decision to come here and they could have gone anywhere else, but part of that bargain of that deal was that they would have a stable retirement and not only their retirement funding, but their, their post-employment benefits. And I've got to believe at this point, we're one of the securist in the state, if not the securist in the state and being, you know, almost fully funded in both categories and receiving a return on investment because of those efforts that, that this board really put the policy in place to do many, many years ago. And the county, of course, is allocating reserves to cover capital-related expenses to cover the VLF shortfalls this year. And the, the county, as you know, the board has let Mr. Niblin's office file a suit against the state to try to recover the 37.8 million that we were shorted this year on the VLF. So on to the eight-year projections. And if you look at this, things look really good, actually. You look at the, the structural gap and you really don't see a gap until 2031, 2032. And that's with, with a couple of assumptions. Includes 100% of VLF reimbursement, the property tax growth averaging 4%, 4.7. I think that's really conservative and I think that's great because that's what I asked Mr. Manquia to do is always be conservative. Modest sales tax growth and reduced interest income and, and then again, using 60 to 70% of ERAF. And remember, we've moved, this is our return to ERAF. We've moved from a 50% induction of that into the budget to a now 60 to 70%. seventy percent infusion of that into the budget. And on the expenditure side, you know, declining debt service as obligations retire and they continue to be reduced every year and rising infrastructure costs of four percent inflation and inflation factors, eight percent for benefits and two percent for services. So the outlook on the near term looks really rosy. But the real problem is the next slide. And as I go to that, you'll see how things can change so quickly. And this is what we're up against. And this is what makes things so daunting for, for this county because things can change very quickly to the tune of, you know, two hundred and thirty-two million dollars, you know, in '25, '26, assuming a ten percent reduction in federal contributions and the reduction of VLF. And it grows and grows considerably to, over that period of time, to over three hundred million potentially. And, and that's what we're, we're really worried about and that's what we're, you know, we're safeguarding against. A lot of this will be out of our control. And that's why it's so important that we're organizing the county on the VLF side, that every single elected official, every club, every organization, every service group in this county has got to understand what's at stake here. This will fundamentally change the way we do business if we lose this funding ongoing. So I don't want to end on a, on a gloomy note, but I can tell you that, you know, the, the things that this board has done to date have put us in a good position for right now. The other things are out of your control, they're out of our control. We are fighting the good fight. We will not know the impacts of HR1 and the big beautiful bill and the state changes to the way that they're funding those for immigrants on the Medi-Cal side. We won't know those till some of this plays out, but we're watching it, we're talking about it, we're meeting on it on a regular basis. And as soon as we really get our hands around the impact, we'll be back to this board to talk about those impacts and, and a path forward. So some of the key takeaways, I'll end you with five point five billion dollar proposed adopted budget, five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine positions, a balanced approach, which is great right now for the foreseeable future, being conservative. We see, you know, a good future if all things line up. Proactive measures, the reserves that, that you, the, the board policy on reserves, the board policy on the OPEB prefunding, the capital investments are all paying off. This is, this is why we're in this position now. And of course, the challenges we talked about are the VLF and the federal policy uncertainty, the state policy changes to CalA. And the county remains poised to be prepared to safeguard services and we are the safety net for the most vulnerable in this county. And we've got to do everything to ensure that we fulfill that role. And I know that our staff is in a position to certainly do that. I want to thank Mr. Manquia and his entire staff for this, putting together this budget in such a comprehensive way, in such a thoughtful way, really taking into consideration the board policies and goals and who you want to serve and how we want to serve and how we want to lead the state of California in service to, and, and, and be that county that's welcoming and, and has a place for everyone and a voice for everyone and, and really set the example for everyone else throughout the state. So I also want to, to pass along to all of you, I don't know if they already have it, Robert, or they do, the executive summary. This will go out, this is something that the board has asked for and I've asked for it, and Mr. Manquia and his staff has, have really worked on this and it, and it gives a, a high-level overview of all the great things that are going on in the county. It's got some great pictures of the board members on it and some beautiful scenery in here of San Mateo County. And I will be sending this out to all my colleagues, the other fifty-seven counties around the state. So they may be a little bit more jealous when they get this and seeing our position. But I just want to also thank the board for setting the policies that you've set, for, for setting the direction that you have set. And I'm here to tell you that we're going to do our very best moving forward in a very, very difficult time of uncertainty. With that, the, the recommendation is to approve a resolution adopting the final budget, to adopt a resolution adopting the revised budget of the County of San Mateo as to the fiscal year 25, '26, adopt a resolution adopting the revised budget, adopt a resolution establishing the appropriation limit for the County of San Mateo, and adopt a resolution authorizing an amendment to the master salary resolution. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions on the budget.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Supervisor Corzo.
I always have questions. Just kidding, not really. Anyways, thank you for the presentation, very thorough, and I really love this. I hope everyone takes a look at it. It's really, it's very informative and I think the thing that stands out to me the most is that we don't have, as, we, we have a lot of one-time funding, but the bulk, I would say, of the county's expensive expenses are not, is staff, right? Is, goes directly to staff and that is a cost that doesn't just increase over time, but, well, it does increase over time, but it also has to keep up with CPI and, and other things. So our, our expenses are constantly going up. So I'll start some of my questions and they're more so about, you know, we have some really important programs that are losing federal funding and we have, as was mentioned, vulnerable community members. And one that I'm concerned with is the CalFresh Healthy Living Program that will be sunsetting next week, I believe. And so I'm, I'm curious about how we, we are planning for that. And I know that's more an HSA question, but yeah, if, if you're able to, to answer that.
I, I don't have the, the answer to that right now, but I'm happy to get to that, Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. Let's see. I also noticed in this budget that there are some non-departmental service expenses coming out from the county's overall budget going to specific departments. And I'm curious, you know, in what cases does that happen and how do we prepare and plan for that?
So through the president, a lot of those, a, a lot of those expenditures are expenditures that change on a yearly basis. So if you were to place the value of money directly into a department with that level of change and the uncertainty, you'd be doing pluses and minuses on a constant basis. Some of them pay for hourly rates, some of them pay differently. So it's easier for us to keep the actual value and allow the department to charge to that value out of non-departmental services rather than moving just the general fund into the department and the, the fund balance issues that happen in regards to that as well.
Thank you. So I just want to pose a scenario. So if we have a department that needs the county to help meet its obligations, that money comes out of a bucket that really is meant for the whole county. Does that make sense?
Correct.
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 Okay. And that, that is something that we have to do to make sure that we continue to provide services, but it's not something we want to have to do regularly, correct?
It's not something you want to consistently have to do on a constant basis, correct?
Yeah. It, that, that impacts other departments negatively, right?
It impacts not only other departments, but the county as a whole because it removes money that would otherwise be utilized for other programming or other things that are also part of the considerations that have to happen.
Thank you. And I'll just add that, that is something I know you all pay special attention to. It's not something that I would say, you know, departmental staff fully grasp, but to me, when I think about all of the cuts that could potentially be coming to safety net programs and, and yet we may be helping kind of bail out other departments, that gives us less money to support those who need it the most. And, and so for me, I'll just say like, this is a priority for me. I, I support paying, paying very careful attention to where this is happening because we don't want to find ourselves in a position where we need to help our community members and we're not able to do that because, because of budgetary issues in other departments, for example. Yeah, thank you. I, I think that's it for now. Go ahead.
Any other questions? Yes. Supervisor.
Thank you. First of all, to our extraordinary executive staff, thank you. Thank you for making us look a whole lot better than we deserve to look because the heavy lifting comes from your efforts and I don't think we want this to go unnoticed. I was struck, Robert, when, in a conversation we had, we were applauding the fact that because of the gymnastics you did, we were able to save a lot of money by renegotiating a bond, I think, paying off the bond, only to realize that we had to spend that money on the increased costs of healthcare for our employees. So it's the best of times, it's the worst of times because we do not know what tsunami is going to come our way. And being prudent about how we spend the taxpayers' dollars is really, really important. So I have one question and one request. In the beautiful brochure here, under median income, it then says unemployment and it lists black, Hispanic, white, Asian. But it looks like, if I'm reading this right, the highest unemployment is among Asians at one hundred and seventy-two, which I, I find that hard to believe. It's under county demographics. And where it says median income, that particular square, do you see it?
I do.
So is, I, I'm presuming, is that accurate?
So that top piece for the total population?
No, I'm talking under unemployment. It says it's at first, it's at four percent. It says the average weekly new unemployment claims in 2024 were twenty-five for black, Hispanics one hundred and thirty-one, whites one hundred and sixty, Asians one hundred and seventy-two. Is that accurate?
It came directly off of the websites that are listed down below, but we can recheck it again.
Okay. And so all claimants age eighteen plus was how many? Is that the, I'm, I'm just confused by that asterisk. Is that the one hundred and seventy-two or is, is that one hundred and seventy-two for Asians?
That is just for Asians. The other ones would be the total value of each position, two-five, one-thirty-one, one-sixty, and one-seventy-two added together.
Okay. So it just, I think it's important for us to appreciate that the largest ethnic group in our county is Asian and we need to recognize our responsibility to that community as well. So I just want to point that out. And then I noticed that, and I asked this of Mr. Manquia, I asked him how many positions in county government have been vacant for a year or more? And he came back with a figure of two hundred. So, you know, I've seen it in, in the federal government a lot where you, you use that as the pad. So you have that extra money to kind of deal with things that occur. I'm uncomfortable with that number of two hundred. I'd like to see us reduce it and I'd like to have a start by reducing it by fifty because that's how many new positions we have just created. So if you, if my colleagues agree, then I'd, I'd like to ask that that kind of action be taken in the near term.
I, yeah, thank you for that, Supervisor Spear. I will endeavor to dive into those deeper and find the reasons and try to come back with a plan to see if we can reduce it by fifty.
All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Corzo.
So Supervisor Spear, I'm, I'm really grateful that you brought up specifically the Asian community because one of the things that I learned took place over the past week is that H1 visas now have a fee of a hundred thousand dollars.
For the employer and only for new H1B visas.
Yes.
So existing ones are retained.
Yes. But my point is that I do think that the, the AAPI community, the Asian community, needs some special attention because those types of fees have impacts. And for the unemployment rate, I was a little confused by it as well. I'm thinking, I, so I don't know if, if it's a hundred and seventy, I know it's not a hundred and seventy-two claims. So I don't, maybe we need percentages here instead of numbers. But for the, going also to the race in ethnicity, some percentages there would be helpful as well, just because, you know, we don't know how the numbers fully break down for seven hun, seven hun, wait, seven hundred forty-two thousand residents. So I do think sometimes when we have data, we just need to make sure that it's in context and I think that's what was, was missing a little bit. And, and I'm also a little bit unclear on some of these numbers. I was going to bring up, let me see, where is it? Yeah, I was, I wanted to raise something that I, I believe is in our, it's, it's in our budget and it's some of our affordable housing funds and how much actually rolls over. I think it's ninety million right now, which is, I would say on the higher end. And so I'm, I'm wondering if we can at some point think about how we can get more of that cash moving faster so we're not rolling over as much. I, I, oh, go ahead.
Well, no, I can say, no, it's a, it's a really good point because I know that, you know, that money's available and ready to be used. It really is dependent on the developers and the timing with tax credits. But we can, we can have Mr. Hodges come in at some point in time and give an update to the board on how that money's being spent and kind of the average time of, of distribution to the various developers using those funds.
Thank you. And if there are barriers, maybe we could just identify what those are and that's, that might be a good policy focuses for our board to, to work on together. Sorry, there was one more thing. I'm trying to find it here. Okay, I'll just wrap up by saying that we know that, you know, I'll just speak right now for regarding our undocumented community, the state, which previously was funding medical for more undocumented residents than ever before, has had to pull that back. And our county actually had already addressed that gap, not perfectly, but I would say more so than many, many other counties. And so I'm hoping that we can prepare for how to support that community, community specifically and, and how we find the funds to do that. I know we previously had the ACE program. I'm still unclear on where that those savings went when the state covered more of the medical for undocumented folks. But now that we might have to pivot back to that, I, I'm not clear on whether we're in a good position to do so or not. So that might be a good discussion point for us as well in the future. Yeah, I'll wrap up. Thank you again. I would say our two biggest, our, our departments that take up most of our county budget are, our Sheriff's Office and our, our Health Department, Public Health. our sheriff's office and our health department, public health, the county hospital, et cetera. And so those two departments, I think we need to pay special attention to because we need our community to make it through these next several years and we know that the biggest impacts from, I refuse to call it beautiful, but the bill that I think is quite ugly, the impacts aren't actually going to be fully felt until next year. And so that is what we're preparing for now and I think it's very responsible of us to do. So that's it. Thank you.
All right. You know, I think this year's budget's a very, very strong budget. Yeah, there's turbulence, there's winds, but when you look at the budget on balance, it's a pretty strong budget. So I want to thank the staff. Can you speak a little, maybe this question is directed to Robert? With general fund reserves now totaling nearly $600 million, how do we compare to peer counties in terms of fiscal resilience?
So comparison is kind of difficult because it really is dependent on how the counties choose to designate reserves and what designated reserves are for. I would say for us, it puts us in a position where we have, to Supervisor Corzo's point, where we have a little bit of movement because we have these one-time funds that we are going to be able to utilize at a time of need. And I think that that's really the more important piece is that we have for our budget a 15% variable. If you look at the state, the state has a rainy day fund and a couple of other funds, nowhere near the value of 15%. But when you look at businesses and when you look at even personal accounts, you know, a 15% or a prudent reserve even for somebody to have in a bank account and a savings is a minimum of 15% so that they have mobility to be able to help fix a car if need be. So when we have things that are not being able to be done efficiently or effectively or we want to try something, this offers us a little bit of room.
And I would say that in comparison to others, and I always hate to compare to others, but we are in a strong position, given not only the rating that we have and our ability to borrow money, but the reserves that we have, most counties don't have a 15% reserve. That was something that we instituted as a stabilizing force for the turbulence that we're facing and the board took up that policy. So given, you know, where we are with our rating, with the fully funding practically of our unfunded liabilities and the assets that we have acquired as of recent and had and paid off early, I think we're in a strong position in comparison around the state. But again, I say that with that caveat that it could change dramatically overnight.
Can you speak to our retirement system? What are we currently funded now through SAM-SERA? What's the percentage? Because I know, the reason I'm trying to sort of lead you with these questions is because I don't think many people understand sort of how we're positioned relative to the state, the United States, in terms of our fiscal prudence. Can you speak to that?
So at this moment in time, we are approximately 87% funded on our retirement fund through SAM-SERA and we just had an current evaluation done on our OPEB, which we talked about, which we are at 94.7% funded, so almost 95% funded. So we are funded very close to the levels that you would anticipate being able to carry forward. I think the bigger piece that we've been able to do in what we will be doing if this passes today in regards to OPEB is really generating a constant value that is predictable in the future. So rather than having a rate that's variable from anywhere from 25 to 38% or 42% or whatever the numbers might change to, depending on the economy, we're going to be kept at 27% in our SAM-SERA. That was done a year ago with the two contributions that we'll be making there. With this OPEB piece being put in a position where it will be about 100 and 105, what happens is that we'll be able to generate interest to keep the account whole and at the same time, the hope is to generate some interest to also pay for the liability that comes out of that account on a yearly basis so that we can generate savings inside of our ongoing revenues. Again, it's just positioning us to be more, have a more predictable future in regards to these two liabilities that we have going forward.
And this is a strategy that we've tried to employ because, as I've indicated to the board members in the past, we're pretty strong on the one-time funds, but we've got to think of creative ways to generate ongoing revenue that will pay for future raises, for future cost increase. You saw the medical cost increase is staggering. We expect more of that. So we've got to continue to be creative in a way that will generate ongoing revenue so we can handle some of these without dipping into reserves.
So, you know, I look at some of the other counties that are experiencing challenges. I mean, there's, you're looking at potentially billion-dollar deficits, you're looking at, I mean, really, when you look at these, these numbers, not my words, but from the Pleasanton Weekly, you look at Alameda County and some of the issues that they're facing, San Francisco County, Santa Clara County. You know, I think what we've shown clearly is, and this isn't just this board and not previous boards, it's the boards before us, is really that we've been strong, I think, when it comes to our, to our balance sheet. What's our credit rating, Mr. Mankeah?
It is AAA.
And what is the, what is the highest rate? Is it AAA?
AAA is the highest rate.
I just want to know if you asked him.
I didn't. But it is AAA and we were just rerated by a few organizations. So we still carry a AAA rating and a AA plus for bonds, which is both the highest ratings that you give.
But the significance-
AAA was my car, you know, car insurance provider.
But the significance of a AAA rating is what most taxpayers don't understand and that's that you borrow at a lower rate.
So that's, can you repeat that again? Because that's a, it's a strong statement. A lot of people just think that, you know, you're dependent on sort of the revenues that go in and the revenues that go out. And I think what Mr. Mankeah said earlier and how you're able to use those dollars effectively, lock in different rates, but can you just sort of expand on that?
Right. So that's, that's what I think everyone should understand and why it's so important to have that rating. We can borrow money, money at a lower rate because we are a more secure risk, saving millions of dollars when we do have to borrow.
And so, you know, as we move forward, our balance sheet again is strong. We are prepared. Not saying that we're going to be able to solve all the challenges that come forward through the federal government, but when we look at our peer counties throughout in the state of California, United States as well, I think we're probably, Mr. Callagie, maybe you can answer this for me. In light of all that is before us, this county, its leadership, the CEO's office, our chief budget officer, has put us in a position to address it, in VLF, but it could be a lot worse. But how we're positioned financially has really put us in a stronger position.
Well, I think the board really sets the policies in that we follow those policies. So I think it's really the board that has put us in this position. But, you know, as I indicated, we're in a pretty good position right now, but we've got an R in the future and it can change dramatically, dramatically, dramatically for us overnight with VLF and state and federal takeaways.
And yeah, let me just close by saying this. Thank you again. I do think that the board provides direction, but I do think it's the staff. Thank you, Mr. Mankeah, Mr. Callagie. I think we're in a better place than a lot of counties are. And the reason I know that is because I speak to a lot of supervisors and we should be extraordinarily proud of what our staff has done. It's put us in such a stronger position. There are some really draconian conversations amongst my peers that are taking place and I'm glad that we're not in that position. Are there any additional comments? Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, colleagues, I think the county's obviously in a great position. I have, from a county perspective, but I have real concerns about where the economy's headed. We saw a 1% increase in unemployment in our county. But if you look at the state and numbers that recently came out from EDD, most of the job growth is taking place in the state right now in taxpayer-funded sectors. We saw, as a state, year-over-year losses that were significant in information and financial activities and construction and manufacturing and professional and business services. The private sector in our state is not healthy. And what we're starting to hear from the tech sector here locally is that this area is enjoying an AI bubble that potentially isn't sustainable. At the federal level, we've seen incredible accomplishment where we've seen now inflation plus job losses taking place nationally. And I am really concerned because the small business owners in my district, who I've been going out and trying to meet with, are indicating that they really haven't seen customers come back since COVID and times are worse now for them, for some of them, than they were during COVID. So while it's great that the county is resilient, I really want to stress that those one-time dollars, we need to try to figure out how to bring relief to the most vulnerable in the county, as you've indicated, Supervisor Corzo, for our most vulnerable, but also our middle class. And we have to start engaging with Sacramento to figure out how we bring relief to our small business owners. I think that there are significant clouds on the horizon and while, and we have to really start figuring out how we can help our private sector partners. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Mueller. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers, so Madam President, please proceed.
We do have three hands raised at this time. We'll start with Dan Stedjic, followed by X. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, Supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name's Dan Stedjic. It's really hard to get anything in in 60 seconds. But I'll start with, recent trip to Germany, I was looking through World War II cartoons, Nazi cartoons, they use the term Geitzig. And I won't use that racially charged term stingy to describe Mr. Wagstaff, but Mr. Callagie's comments that Mr. Wagstaff is value-minded are accurate. Though we've got assistant DAs making over $500,000 in total pay and benefits, there are at least six counties, Riverside LA, Santa Clara, that pay significantly more. Those familiar with my work on regional measure four statistics and the accuracy I came up with there will heed this in mind. I've identified another $141.7 million in current deficit that the county has not identified, including $61.7 million in this year's healthcare deficit. Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. We've, we're one of four counties, Amador County, Mono County, and Alpine County, that received no VLF this year. We had conversations at the state level. I will say that the other counties, Amador, Mono, and Alpine County largely did not receive their VLF because their controller failed to submit a series of forms. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. X, followed by Sid Young. X, please unmute.
Yes, hi. In response to the public sector hurting, have you ever thought about the reason it might be that a lot of them are leaving the state due to the socialist agenda and extreme taxes which are perpetrated by this county? Also, Callagie mentioned the concern about immigrant Medicaid. I would hope that you could clarify the difference between lawful residents and illegals that we're paying for. It would really clarify the situation of how much money we're spending on illegals and if we actually complied with ICE to remove these people, we'd be in a much better position. And finally, he stated that we want to be an inclusive county with a voice for everyone. Well, that's not true because I was cut off earlier and I did not get to speak about item number 13, where I wanted to state that the person that was just appointed to the Sheriff's Commission is a racist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now go to Sid Young.
Last call for speakers.
Oh, yes, Mr. President. Sid, before you begin at this time, this is a last call for public comment on this item. So please raise your hand if you wish to speak at this time. Okay, final call has been made. No other hands have come up. So Sid, you will be the last speaker. Please proceed.
I think I already unmuted before they interrupted. Okay, so this is a question and it may, I know you don't usually answer questions, but maybe you could do a clarification regarding our VLF, the 38 million we're trying to get back from the state. I'm wondering if those are pass-through dollars that the cities and special districts get through the county or does the state pay those directly to the cities and the special districts within San Mateo County? And then also, is ERAF at all related to the state-funded holdback of our VLF? Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, Mr. President.
Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Maybe we can have the chief executive explain the situation relative to Sid Young's question. And I think under this circumstances, when it's an item, we can discuss it. It's not-
That's fine. Can you?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about it. So the 37 million is, includes monies that go to the cities. Our portion of it was 20, 23 or so?
Approximately 60%, I think.
Yeah, approximately 60%. So it comes through the controller's office and then distributed to the cities. So it does come through, through the county. And it's not related and I think that folks, especially at the state, get this conflated, the difference between VLF and returned ERAF. These are taxpayer dollars that belong in this county and they have been, and I don't use this word lightly, you know, absconded with by the state, looking to balance their budget. This money, to the extent, and it's the same situation Alpine and Mono is in and has been in, in trying to get those, but to a much, much lesser extent because of their size. This is a real, real problem with us and it will continue and I do not think, you know, the state is inclined to give us anything. This was a reduction this year. I think it's an elimination next year.
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, I think the constituents' question raises an important issue, which is I don't think most people in our county understand VLF and understand why we are apoplectic about this and why this is a taking because dollars that are generated by the sale of vehicles go to counties and cities. There was the agreement that was reached to create a means to do that. I mean, I'm not even clear as to why they agreed to do that, but it seems like we might benefit from having a complete discussion on VLF at another board meeting because it's, it's really dire for our county and we're the only county that's really in this situation. The other counties are talking about much smaller sums of money, but this is going to cripple us.
This could equate to, you know, billions of dollars over the, you know, next 20 years. But we do have a resident expert here in Justin Maits and certainly Dan McCloskey from the county attorney's office and they would love to give a 15, I think they'd love to give a 15-minute tutorial, 15, 20-minute tutorial to the public at a future meeting. So I think it's a great idea and we are planning on giving a one-page fax to every elected official, you know, 10 points, 10 facts on VLF to every elected official that we're going to be asking them to talk about at every meeting they go to.
Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to request that we have a study session. Invite cities to participate, to talk about the impacts it's going to have on them and the potential obvious impacts it's going to have on the county and why this is, why this lawsuit is so important as well.
That's a great idea. We should, when would you want that scheduled? Maybe the next month, couple months? All right. Okay. All right. So let me bring the item back to the board. Do we have a resolution? I believe it's on, we have a motion- I believe it's on, we have a motion to approve all four resolutions.
I'm moved for approval.
All right. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Thank you Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
And President Kanapa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Goshay being absent.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you to our staff. That brings us to, I believe it's item three. We're receiving and accepting the five-year capital improvement plan, CIP, for FY 2025 through 2030. This item also comes from the county executive, who will be presenting this item. Mr. Callagie.
Yes, thank you, President Kanapa, members of the board. Actually, I'm going to turn this over to staff. I think the board's heard enough from me, and it, we want to highlight some of the great work that they do, and it's a great opportunity for them to stand before the board and, and give a presentation on the, on the capital improvement plan for the next five years. So I will turn it over to them.
Thank you. Good morning, President Kanapa, honorable members of the board, Mr. Callagie, Mr. Niblin, Mr. Maits, and Mr. Mankeah. My name is John Allen. I'm a senior management analyst in the Office of Budget Policy and Performance. I'm here today to present an update on the five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2025 through 2030. My colleague in the budget office, John Reidner, and I have collaborated with program and fiscal staff from the Department of Public Works, the Information Services Department, the Parks Department, and the Project Development Unit to prepare this plan, and I would like to thank each of them for their time and effort. This capital improvement plan, or CIP, outlines the budgeted and planned project amounts approved by this board across all departments. The plan contains 268 projects with a total projected expenditure of $975 million over the next five years. The amount budgeted in year one is $508.5 million, and the amount shown for fiscal years 26, 27, and beyond represent the planned amounts that we expect to budget in future years. As was stated earlier, all projects are fully funded at the time of approval, so we do anticipate that large amounts of funding will roll over from year one into subsequent The county leverages a variety of funding sources to implement a broad array of capital projects. Funding sources vary greatly from project to project and may include a mix of funding. You'll see on the table here that general fund, non-departmental, accounts for the vast majority of project funding, and this is due to large capital construction projects as well as remodel projects that serve multiple departments, and the fact that most projects are fully funded and dollars needed for out years are typically held in non-departmental services so that they are available for the life of the project. You'll also note that bond funding is anticipated to end in fiscal year 25, 26. This is due to the closeout of bond-funded projects at the San Mateo Medical Center as well as the Cordillares Mental Health Facility. This reduction in bond funding represents a shift in the county's capital strategy, moving from a ground-up construction approach to a purchase and refurbish model. Specifically, this model involves the county acquiring and improving existing office and other use-type spaces for county needs. Factors driving this shift include the current commercial real estate market, cost-effectiveness, reduced environmental impact when compared with new construction, as well as long-term financial stability. Examples of this approach in the five-year CIP include improvements at Bridgepoint in San Mateo, a new youth shelter in North Fair Oaks, as well as improvements to the Mitten Road Facility in Burlingame, which will provide space for staff at the Department of Agriculture, Weights and Measures, sheriff programs, and expanded warehouse space. When viewing this shift at a project level, the impact is an increase in the number of remodel and refurbish projects with a correlated decrease in number of ground-up construction projects. This also results in a decrease in ongoing operating expenditures associated with leases. The information provided to you this morning is a high-level overview of the five-year capital improvement plan, and more detailed information can be found on the county's website. The website features, this is a digital-first plan that features an interactive GIS map, data visualizations, featured project highlights, as well as backup documentation of all of the projects featured in the CIP at a project level. For each department involved, a number of featured projects are highlighted on the website and include detailed information about the project's background, the budget, and the timeline for each project. Examples of this include ISD's voiceover IP transition, which is bringing county telephone infrastructure up to modern standards; DPW's Pescadero Waterline Extension Project, which is bringing reliable water supply to Pescadero High School, as well as the planned Pescadero Fire Station; PDU's North County Wellness Center, which will serve as a hub for county services in northern San Mateo County; and Park's commitment to inclusive playgrounds at Flood Park and at Coyote Point, which will provide spaces for people of varying ages, abilities, and, and interests to participate at all of our county parks. Again, I encourage you to visit the five-year CIP website for more information about these and other important and impactful projects. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions? Supervisor Corzo.
Thank you. First off, I just wanted to say that John Allen, I've, my experience working with you has been more so with, in the past with the Youth Commission, so it's nice to see you in your element, and that was an excellent presentation. I, for one, love the capital improvement plan because I have seen it empower some of our departments in being able to get out of leases and have more cash flow available to meet other needs in their departments. And I think it, you know, it's been an excellent strategy. I also, you know, I'll, I don't want to speak for Supervisor Mueller, but the, the, the Pescadero High School project has been a long time coming, and it's going to bring drinkable, safe water to a community that, that didn't have that exactly because they were dependent on well water. And, you know, I think about inclusive playgrounds and, you know, I grew up in Coyote Point, so I have seen the playgrounds through the years, and, you know, they've, they've always been improved upon. But as someone that worked with developmentally disabled people and kids in our community, parents go a long way to find a playground that is suitable for their kids if they have different abilities. And I think it's a beautiful thing that we're investing in that in our community. And while, you know, kids enjoy, playgrounds are meant for kids to enjoy them, it's also parents, it's also people with special needs who will get to benefit, and it's, everyone, everyone will, will enjoy them, the, the new playgrounds. I wanted to just ask a question about why we don't see housing in the capital improvement plan. I know the answer to the question, if you want me to answer it. Do you know it?
So I do.
Yes, okay.
So through the president, it's, the reason why housing is not part of our capital plan is we are not building the housing at this point in time. The housing is actually being built by a developer. We are a loan function through the Affordable Housing Fund that helps put money into the process of the building, but we are not the actual builders itself, so it's not part of our capital improvement plan. We could, if in the future wanted to, we could add something along that line to the CIP, but at this point in time, it's not us developing or doing the actual construction or the work on the projects themselves.
Yes, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it is partly because we are restricted by Article 34 in investing and developing housing that is more than 49% for low-income residents or employees.
Through the chair, Supervisor Corzo, yeah, I'm pretty familiar with this article, and that is correct.
Yeah, and I know, well, actually, let me ask another question. Other, are, is there any workforce housing right now in the capital improvement plan?
No, not in the capital improvement plan.
But in the future, it could be.
Absolutely. If this board decided that it wanted to build, you know, we've set aside funding for workforce housing. We believe it's vital to the, to the county and our, and our future ability to attract and retain employees. We'd love to, we have another piece of land, not only the Law Library of Land, but we have another piece of land in San Carlos that we'd be able to build on. So absolutely, if the board decided to go that route, we could certainly do that.
Thank you. And then just specifically, let me open this PDF here, so I have it in front of me. But specifically for the properties on Fashion Island in San Mateo, those are part of this capital improvement plan, correct?
Yes, they are included in here.
Okay, and just to kind of lift up, lift that up a little more, one is the building for HSA, which allowed them to, which is allowing HSA to get out of a lease. They, I think are half-moved in, if not fully.
Yeah, I believe it's partially complete.
Yes, and will be in a much more accessible location, or at least like centrally located in the county. And then the other building, our future FJC, will, will be there. But I'll just put out there that it's one of my dreams to see housing available to victims of abuse and domestic violence, and those properties were actually zoned for housing by the city of San Mateo in the future. So they are, you know, we, we could do it one day, but not, not currently because of the restrictions that we face. So I guess my, my only, my ask would be that we think about what we could do and what we could update in this five-year capital improvement plan if we were able to...
Good idea.
Better integrate housing. So thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I, I never thought I'd be so like excited about capital improvement plans, but, but I think they're great, and they're a great tool and a great strategy for our county to mitigate the impacts of like commercial rental leases constantly, you know, being increased, et cetera. So thank you.
All right. Supervisor Mueller.
Yeah, the capital improvement projects are great to look at because they are a direct reflection of not just policy, but how you, how you spend the money, how you go ahead and, and how you, people often say how you spend the money is actually the truth of your, of your policy work. So I, you know, I again want to thank you Supervisor Corzo mentioned it, but we have the Pescadero Waterline Extension in here as a featured product, project, and the, and the Fire Station, which are both huge improvements. And then also Cordillares is here within my district, which I'm also very thankful for. But as all things, whenever we express thanks, and we thanks to you that I have to give thanks to the memory Supervisor Horstley. It's always appropriate to do that when we talk about those projects. So thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? You know, the one thing I just want to uplift, I mean, when I look at several of these projects, especially Cordillares, North County Wellness Center, a lot of these projects through our CIP, they reflect the county's priority around, priorities around equity, mental health, and access to, to healthcare, especially for those underserved communities. You know, we always, we build things, right? And we, we, we build things, and, and it's great, we're in a beautiful building. Can you talk a little bit about how in the CIP or outside of the CIP, the ongoing maintenance and operating costs for these new facilities, how are they addressed? Maybe that's through Mr. Mankeah.
We do have a, an operating fund for like the, the Navigation Center and other interim hotels, and so we do take care of the, the maintenance and operations through those funds that, that we have set up. You know, they are expensive to operate, and, and we've, we've accounted for that. It's much more expensive to keep people on the street, but it has created a tremendous new workload for DPW, and, and we've contracted some of that out, but that's why I think in the, in the previous budget, I mentioned that we have added staff to DPW to take care of some of those maintenance needs.
And so what I'm hearing from you is in the CIP plan, there's no sort, there's no sort of carve-out for, for maintenance beyond the construction of the facility, right? Yeah, Mr. Mankeah.
So through the chair, yes, there is cutouts or carve-outs for maintenance. Maintenance is actually something that has to be done on a yearly basis. We do collect, when we collect rents for the buildings that we're in, a small portion of the dollar associated to that is associated with the upkeep of, you know, air conditioning units or air handling units and, and heating, the floors and those types of things, bathrooms. But we do have a maintenance budget that we have every year as part of the CIP. It's actually part of the Department of Public Works numbers that you see in there. When you look at those facilities that are in that very long list of projects, you will see that we're replacing carpets, we're updating paint, we're changing doorways, we're replacing every elevator within the county right now because of the same issue that you are seeing that was discussed earlier. Our aging elevator structure is just not there. So we have, I believe, $25 million sitting aside just to replace elevators throughout all of the older buildings in the county. So we do have a maintenance budget that is associated to the CIP.
And then, not to get too much in the weeds, in terms of the, the actual CIP, what is the percentage that addresses those maintenance needs? And here's where I'm going with it. We, you and I felt, we, we found ourselves in a very undesirable place, and that, that place was on some of the Project Home Key Hotels and the maintenance of them. The cost was just growing exponentially. I'm just wondering through my question if there's a way to sort of plan so we don't find ourselves in a similar place.
So that is something that we are continuing to look at and review. I would say right now, of the current year's budget, I would say it's somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe a little over 12%, maybe around 15% in total for maintenance at this point in time is what we're using for facility maintenance. So it is a smaller number at this point, but what we're trying to do is make sure that, just as we're doing with other things, that in the future, we can manage it a little differently. So we're, we're looking at different types of things that we can bring in, maybe even some AI at some point in time to help us garner the idea of what these things might cost, you know, in 10 years or, or the future.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Supervisor Spear.
Thank you, Mr. President. Along the lines of anticipating maintenance needs and these elevators that are going to cost us an arm and a leg, is there any thought to purchasing the potential parts that you will need in subsequent years to be replaced in sophisticated or important items? Because it seems like we've got that problem now with a number of elevators, and they're all about the same age, correct?
That's right. And, and I mean, it's, it's an interesting concept, and I do know that Public Works does purchase replacement parts and store them, but to the extent that they have cash for those someplace, I don't know, but it's an interesting concept I can explore with Public Works.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. No speakers from chambers for item number three. Madam Speaker, please proceed.
Those on Zoom, please click raise hand at this time for item number three for the capital improvement plan. No hands raised, Mr. President.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved. Oh, go ahead. Second.
Okay, second by Corzo. Roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear.
Aye.
Thank you Supervisor Corzo.
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller.
Yes.
And President Kanapa.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Goshay being absent.
All right, and so that brings us to our, our final item, and that is item seven, to adopt, this is on the Board of Supervisors category, to adopt a resolution directed at the county executive to use oversight procedures set forth in the county reserves policy as to sheriff's office due to its low reserve, reserves level. Who is going to present on this?
Actually, I'm bringing it to the board, so I'll, I'll start. You know, two are of our most important responsibilities as members of the Board of Supervisors is the oversight of county programs and making sure that there are prudent expenditures of taxpayer money. The county reserve policy is consistent with our obligation to be watchdogs over the county budget. budget. The county executive has discretion and we have provided that for him, not just this year, but in previous years as well. He has discretion to review all contracts under $200,000 of a department which has not maintained a 2% reserve for two years. The sheriff's department's reserve doesn't meet the 2% reserve. It doesn't meet the 1.5% reserve. It doesn't meet a 1% reserve. Its reserve is 1/2 of 1%. It is the only department in the county in this position. In May, I brought a resolution to the board, which passed, requiring quarterly reports to the board of purchases of goods that exceeded 100,000 and all non-competitive purchases of 10,000. Now, the sheriff's letter to us yesterday said, and I'll quote, "I am confident that the board does not wish to review every contract under $200,000. It would be a needless waste of the board's time," unquote. Well, I disagree with that. I think that is fundamental to our responsibilities. Now, I asked for a readout of the number of contracts under $200,000 within the sheriff's department. And in just reviewing it this morning, I saw 83 sole source contracts over the course of one year. I'm not a fan of sole source contracts and I think they only should be used when it makes sense. So that alone would be reason to look at it. My very first board meeting that I attended in January, I pulled an item off the agenda that was for over a million dollars for the sheriff's department to purchase more audiovisual equipment. And it turns out that one of those purchases was a $700,000 TV. Now, there've been other uncovering issues of a $70,000 table and 10 massage chairs that actually the procurement officer declined to support. So I think that, that the county executive has the authority at his discretion to do this. We bringing this resolution because we want to request that the county executive do this and it is just the prudent thing to do. Now, the sheriff asked that this be put on the regular agenda and I was happy to accommodate her and I know she'd like to speak to it. But I think having a reserve during these really crisis proportion times is imperative and having an appropriate reserve. I mean, we want everyone to get to 6% and right now, this department is at less than actually 1/2 of 1%. So with that, maybe the county manager wants to speak or maybe the sheriff would like to come up and speak.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe we have the sheriff come up and speak. And I'm, I'm happy to address it after that.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes.
And I'm going to ask the county council. Mr. Niblin, is this an action the boards allowed to take by law?
Yes, I think so. I, I, the county reserve policy, as you know, was adopted over a year ago, actually, and it mandates departmental reserves of 4% of net appropriations and it sets forth some actions that the board mandates in the event that reserves fall below 2%, including as Supervisor Spear had noted, that the county executive may rescind the delegation of authority to contract, which actually lies with the board in the first instance. The board has delegated to the purchasing manager the authority to enter into contracts up to $200,000 and that authority has been further delegated to department heads. The board is the ultimate authority with respect to all purchases, subject to the delegation I've just described. And there are a number of other measures that are described in the reserve policy, including the obligation to consult with the county executive if there's a need for a fund, well, a loan from the general fund to, to deal with, to deal with any shortfalls in, in reserve fund or, or fund balance. The, the board, as I think board members know, pursuant to the government code section 25303, is responsible to supervise the official conduct of all county officers, particularly insofar as the functions and duties of such county officers relate to the assessing, collecting, safekeeping, management or disbursement of public funds. I think it's also important to note that, you know, this authority that we're talking about that the board has and responsibility that the board has needs to be exercised in conformity with and with an eye toward the independent authority that certain elected officials have, to include the sheriff, the district attorney, the county assessor as some, again, as some examples. And this authority that the board has and responsibility that the board has to oversee county officers is not construed to affect the independent and constitutionally and statutorily designated investigative powers of the sheriff, for example, or the jailkeeping functions of the, of the sheriff. And so again, the notion is that the power exists, it needs to be on a case-by-case basis exercised in conformity with the, with elected officials' constitutionally mandated powers. And we've organized our office in such a way that the sheriff on a case-by-case basis, if it was ever thought that the board's oversight was in some way impinging on that power, there'd be an ability to analyze that again on a case-by-case basis. But the general action that's proposed is certainly within the board's power.
All right, and so it's within the board's power, it's consistent with board policy?
Yes.
So we're authorized to take the action today?
Yes.
All right.
Sheriff Corpus.
Good morning, President Canepa, Board of Supervisors, County Executive Callagie, CFO Manquia, Deputy County Executive Bates, members of the public. This is an official request to move agenda item seven to a later date until a non-conflicted council can review the legal efficacy of this legislation. This resolution, if passed, would strip the sheriff's office, an independent office, of its independent budgetary authority and transfer that control, to give control and contracts under 200,000 to the county executive. Until this point, I received no notice of this action nor any opportunity to provide any input or explanation. The lack of transparency surrounding this resolution is deeply troubling and raises fundamental questions about governance and fairness. The stated justification for this proposed resolution appears to be tied to the reserve policy compliance. However, the facts tell a different story. The most significant impact on the sheriff's office ability to meet the 2% reserve requirement resulted from a decision made by the county executive to authorize double overtime. The decision placed a substantial and unforeseen burden on the sheriff's budget, one entirely outside of my control. To now use those very impacts as justified justification to curtail the authority of the sheriff's office is fundamentally unfair and with principle of good governance. The county executive who stands to gain this authority is the same official who personally authorized the double overtime that destabilized the sheriff's office budget and is currently named plaintiff in active litigation against the county and me, seeking and is actively seeking my removal from office. This creates a clear and undeniable conflict of interest. It is improper and deeply concerning for an individual in this position to assume direct control over the budget of an independent elected official, especially when the actions leading to the alleged problem originated from the very office. The pattern is unmistakable. Directives are issued without warning, decisions are made that impose costs on the sheriff's office without consultation, and then those impacts are cited as justification for stripping away authority. This is not fiscal stewardship, it is retaliatory behavior. The most significant impact on our reserves came from not the decisions within the sheriff's office, but from structural obligations and county-level actions. The office was required to fund a $10 million of their reserves, of our reserves towards 330 Bradford Street, a burden no other department has ever faced. In the fiscal year 2324, double overtime was authorized for six-month period totaling $17.2 million, of which only 8.4 million was covered by the county executive's office, leaving us to absorb the balance. Shortly afterward, in September of 2024, the county revised the reserve policy to increase the departmental requirements from 2% to 4% of net appropriations. For our office, this meant a $13 million requirement while our reserves stood at only 1.5 million, creating an 11 and 5 million shortfall. At the same time, the MOU with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, which created, excuse me, which included salary increases, was negotiated and approved prior to me taking office and without any involvement from me. Through the pay increases were later implemented, though the pay increases were later implemented during my tenure. As part of our strategy to meet these new reserve requirements, we kept staffing vacancies in place even when, even though we've hired over 260 employees. The hiring process and associated training created additional expenditures, but it was essential to restore staffing levels. Our fiscal year 2425 spending savings plan identified $7.1 million in vacancy savings, $2 million in deferred operational expenses and 1.8 million in net savings after the county executive's office 50% retention policy. We also raised unresolved issues, including 3.9 million in DSA colas and 1.6 million in SCIU colas that were not included in the budget targets. 26.3 million in specialty pay that have not received a net county cost adjustment in over 10 years despite 43% cumulative colas and a $4.25 million cost to replace obsolete radios. In addition, our repayment obligation for the fiscal year 2324 year end fund balance adjustments were set at $4.4 million. Stacy Stevenson documented in writing that the CEO raised the option of a loan to help address these obligations, but when she sought clarity from CFO Robert Manquia, she never received a response. To ensure clarity and fairness, I respectfully request answers to the following questions before any action is taken. Are any other department heads being subjected to the same scrutiny for reserve compliance? Which departments are currently below the 2% reserve threshold? Which departments have experienced budgetary impacts as significant as those who impose, as those imposed on the sheriff's office by the double overtime authorization? Which departments are required to ask Mr. Callagie to approve contracts under 200,000? If this resolution were truly about fiscal responsibility and accountability, these questions would be addressed openly and similar actions would be applied consistently across all departments, not selectively to the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office plays a critical role in protecting the safety and well-being of our communities. Removing its independent budget authority threatens not only operational effectiveness, but public trust. The proposed transfer would set a dangerous precedent, erode the independence of an elected law enforcement office and concentrating power in a single administrator who has demonstrated clear bias and personal involvement in ongoing disputes. I strongly urge the board to delay this resolution until there has been a full and transparent review of the facts, an opportunity for the sheriff's office to provide meaningful input and public discussion to ensure the community understands the stakes involved. I remain committed to collaborating and to collaboration and the principles of transparency and accountability. My sole focus, focus is serving the residents of San Mateo County with integrity and ensuring that every decision we make strengthens, not weakens, our ability to keep them safe. Thank you for your attention, consideration to this urgent matter. I trust that you share my commitment to upholding the independence of the sheriff's office and ensuring the decisions of this magnitude are made openly and fairly.
Thank you, Sheriff Corpus. Are there any, any comments or questions for the sheriff? Oh, would you like to speak as well, sir?
Yes, please.
Okay. I thought we had handled it all, but go ahead.
Mr. President, how much time?
Is three minutes okay?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Christopher Ulrich. I represent Sheriff Corpus.
You can speak directly into the mic, sorry.
Of course, thank you. The board should not adopt item seven. While Supervisor Spear's concerns are important, this proposal is not the right solution. A better path is to collaborate and work collaboratively with the sheriff to stabilize her budget. As written, item seven would place the county executive in charge of the sheriff's office, including contract approval of any amount. That raises legal concerns that we are exploring and additionally, it raises risks of ineffect, of being ineffective. We have already seen the consequences of when the county executive controls the purse strings. This is like putting the fox in charge of the hen house. In December 2022, as Sheriff Corpus stated, just a month before she took office, the county approved a Deputy Sheriff's Association contract raising their pay by 13% and owing millions in back pay. Now, they were entitled to good pay, but they had been out of contract for almost two years. And the county executive and this board saddled Sheriff Corpus with a 13% increase in labor costs and millions in back pay. In mid-2023, Sheriff Corpus's budget was reduced by $19 million, despite the fact that the overall county budget was being increased and that law enforcement safety budget was overall generally increased. The county pie grew and Sheriff's Corpus's portion shrunk. Then in December 2023, overtime pay was expanded, as you've heard. Sheriff Corpus was giving the county too much credit for that. It caused an explosion in overtime, whereas usually overtime is budgeted at 13 million. That year, it came in at 53 million. The county executive promised this board that the county would cover. Sheriff Corpus texted with Supervisor Mueller that morning saying, "Please cover the costs." During the hearing, Supervisor Mueller asked County Executive Callagie, "Will we cover the costs?" And County Executive said, and I quote, "Yes, we'll be working with the sheriff's office in regard to the budget to ensure the sheriff will remain whole on this." He also promised oversight. He did neither. In practice, this exploded the sheriff's budget and reduced the ability of her to fund other things. Robert Manquia can speak to this. He and Stacy Stevenson thought this might be fraud in overtime. Sheriff Corpus didn't have the ability to stop that overtime from occurring. There was no oversight by the county and that was their fault. The lesson is clear, the problem of mismanagement of the sheriff's office budget is not with Sheriff Corpus, it's with the county executive. I understand their department does very good work, as we've just heard, but there is a bad apple in there who is manipulating the process and hurting Sheriff Corpus and her reserves. Thank you for the time.
Are there any other additional questions? I see County Executive Callagie.
Oh, yeah. I'd very much like to respond to this, if I may. This false narrative about the double overtime has got to stop. It has been debunked at every turn with evidence, with evidence, and it has got to stop. I will tell this board exactly how the double overtime came about. The unions went to the sheriff and indicated that they thought the best way forward to retain people would be to implement double overtime for a period of time. The sheriff agreed and said that she liked that idea, but she didn't have the money for it. She told them to come to my office and talk to me about it. They came and talked to me about it and I was dubious because I felt, I don't know if double overtime would help with retention. So I immediately contacted the sheriff. We had a meeting and she indicated that she supported the double overtime. that she supported the double overtime and wanted to try it for a period of time. So then, we got everybody together. HR, her fiscal team, our fiscal team, the two unions. And we sat in a room together, and we discussed this overtime, this double overtime. She indicated that she wanted to move forward with it. We left, we had the union step out, and we talked about it collectively, collectively as a, as a, as a group. We then agreed to implement the double overtime in that the county, my office, would cover the gap between the time and a half that she already had and the double overtime. That was twenty-five percent of the, of the total overtime. And it was estimated by her office at twelve million dollars for that period of time. We agreed that we would cover that. To further show that the sheriff was involved in every step of this double overtime, there are numerous emails between the sheriff and Michelle Kukka in HR that set up the double overtime, that talked about how it would be set up. I am happy to produce that for the press, for this public, for this board. We've got all those emails that show that the sheriff was intimately involved in setting up the double overtime. In fact, the sheriff wanted to extend the double overtime, according to these emails, to the lieutenants. And she went further and wanted to extend it for six, for eight months to twelve months. So we got into the overtime after an agreement. And by the way, that agreement was brought to this board. The sheriff was present and supported that, that item in front of the board. And then the overtime took effect. And I've got to say, I've never seen anything like it. It was, it was overtime that went completely, completely out of control. I asked the CFO for a report on it, and it was like overtime I've never seen. It was like a free-for-all. I sent an email to the sheriff asking about this. And later, the sheriff said, and I quote, I take full responsibility for not providing more oversight on the double overtime. Full responsibility for not providing double oversight on the double overtime. This was something completely out of my control. In every department, they control their own overtime. They control it to the benefit of the public. It is not a free-for-all. Now, the double overtime, they say, that time period of overtime and double overtime, they say, came to seventeen million. We have no records of that. In fact, I think they've miscalculated it because they've included benefits in that, which you don't include benefits in overtime. We have no idea where they came up with that number. I think Mr. Mankia has it between twelve and fourteen million. Our responsibility of that twelve to fourteen million would have been one quarter, one quarter. We would have paid somewhere around three million of that twelve million. But they created such a hole that we gave them eight point four million. And of that eight point four million, I said, look, we'll, we'll give you four million, and we'll, and I'll give you a loan of another four million. But the reason we never followed up on the loan is because they have no money. They have no money to, why am I even, why would I even talk about terms of a loan when they have no means to repay it? So we've let that go, and we, our intention was not to collect that money. In regard to, in regard to contributing in some of these other, in some of these other expenses that the sheriff spoke to, the ten million dollars in the building contribution was a deal that I, that I, that this board and I cut with Sheriff Polanos, where they would take ten million dollars out of their reserves and put it towards the billion, towards the building. I would, the county would contribute fifteen million towards the building, and then the rest was donated. That was a deal that we cut a long time ago, and Sheriff Polanos had saved up and had that money set aside for that building project. In regard to the colas, and there may be a fundamental misunderstanding of how money is managed and how colas work in the county. And this is standard for every single department. When deals are cut by this board, we don't change the budget immediately. The departments absorb that cost for a period of time until we have a new budget cycle. And it's usually made up through cost savings. It's always been done that way. But all of those colas, once the new budget hits, are paid for, are paid for by this county. They are not absorbed by the departments. We pay for every one of those colas moving forward. In regard to the specialty pays, this is something that has always, always been paid by the departments. It is not something that is new or imposed upon this sheriff. This is the history of the county, not something I instituted, not something I instituted at all. The four point two five million cost to replace obsolete radios, the county picked that cost up. We never asked the sheriff's department to pick that cost up. We contributed four point four million dollars extra of Prop 172 money to pay for those radios because it was a safety item. And then, you know, I've got to just take a moment and explain all the things that we have done for the sheriff's office, that the money that we've put in there, it has never been equaled. In the two and a half years this sheriff has been there, we have never contributed this much funding to any other department. Thirty, thirty K hiring bonuses for, for the employees, hired four contractors for her transition team, supported her on the building overruns in millions of dollars, gave her another three point eight million in operating costs, gave her funding for a perd officer, gave her a clinician on domestic violence. We supported the retirees being in the court, supported the new Axon contract, another safety item, increased operating expenses in 22, 23 by two point six million to pay for ongoing expenses. She asked for a crime lab tech, so we gave her one. We increased nine part-time positions, allowed the lease of the old fire station on the coast, on the coast, and paid for it. Supported budget, a burglar award program, and added ten million to her budget to make her whole in 23, 24. Additionally, the Tower Road site, site rent, we've increased her rent up on Tower Road to allow her to expand into the old lab space. We've added one point two million dollars to the non-departmental services budget to support vehicle replacement. On Mitten Road, we gave two hundred thousand dollars in networking costs, computer aided dispatch, computer aided assisted fingerprint identification system, another two hundred and fifty thousand. And as you know, this board just approved five hundred thousand for handgun purchases. Additionally, we have authorized two more positions in the lab because of a backlog in DNA and fingerprinting evidence. I cannot remember in the history of this county when we've contributed so much to one department in such a short period of time. And this revisionist history on this double overtime has got to stop. I am willing to show this board emails or bring other members of, of, of the sheriff's office forward to talk about this double overtime issue because it has nothing to do with the, the budget, her being over expended on the budget. This is pure and simple management issues that we have got to get under control. Mr. Mankia is well positioned as the CFO of this county to oversee those expenditures. Supervisor Spear, you alluded to some of those expenditures of the seventy thousand dollar table. There was a forty thousand dollar cost of, per month for a hire that she made. We have no idea what that is. We have the massage chairs, the ice cream machines, all these other things that have been moving forward in her budget. And those are the only things that have impacted her budget. And I just want to also say, this year, we, the sheriff's office budget was seven hundred thousand dollars in the red after all expenditures of the reserves. So they had no money in their reserves, and they were seven hundred thousand dollars below the reserves. They're not even supposed to use the reserves without permission of this board, and that never took place. We had to infuse money into that budget just to get the sheriff's office to the point where she's at point zero four, the point of four or five percent, not even a half percent of the two percent. We talked about the four percent. That is not an obligation that's, that's due right now. We gave all of the department heads five years to get their budgets up two percent, to get it up two percent, and everyone knew that. We've also talked about this policy change in a board of directors meeting, where all elected officials go, with, with the exception of the sheriff, to, because we talk about important issues in regard to the county. We talked about this in June. I had it on my schedule for June of 24, over a year ago. We talked about this policy change to ensure that the, the reserves policies were adhered to and that there was some tea to them because we saw some departments moving towards a, a problem with their reserves. So.
Mr. Callagie, can you wrap up, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have done everything that we can to support the sheriff's office, yet we find ourselves in a position today that the reserves are just not adequate and that we feel that the best thing for this county is for the CFO to review all contracts under two hundred thousand dollars. Obviously, anything else needs to come to this board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Corpus.
Thank you. No, it is our turn to speak now. You've gotten your turn.
Hold on one sec. Thank you.
I have questions, and thank you, sorry about that. I have questions for our leadership here. Can you remind us, when did we pass this resolution that departments needed to have four percent? Or at minimum, two percent in their reserves?
Yeah, it was, it was September 2024, and I've got the resolution here someplace.
It's resolution number zero eight, zero six, four, seven, September 24th of 2024.
Thank you. And when did the sheriff's office fall below the two percent?
The last fiscal year was the first time they fell below. So they had a year to, to get that up and, and avoid this process. And they did not avail themselves of that opportunity.
Thank you. And what other departments are not meeting their two percent reserves at the moment?
We have one department that is at one point nine five percent. So they would be, they would fall into that category. And a year from now, if they don't increase those reserves, they'd be in the same position as the sheriff's office.
Thank you. And I heard, I, I heard Supervisor Spear mention that we have noticed a habit from the sheriff's office leadership of having multiple contracts fall below the two hundred K over the course of one year for the same vendor that could have been one larger contract. Is that right?
That's correct, but we really have no insight into that.
Thank you. And so I just want to speak to that for a second because that is under the discretion of every department. It's a waste of procurement's time to have to work on and approve multiple contracts for the same vendor. It's, I think, an example of poor planning, poor management. And in this case, I actually truly believe it was done with intent. And it's been something that, I think, has been happening in this department specifically since, you know, the beginning of 2023. And it's a really irresponsible habit. I want to move on to another question. Do you believe that specific habit from any department is a risk to the county's overall budget and financial health?
Any other department? No. Given the size of this department and the budget, three hundred and something, three hundred and twenty-four million. No, this is the largest, this is the largest threat. I mean, really, all departments have been very, very fiscally responsible. And if they, if they do start to slide, we start to, we, we get with them and work with them.
Thank you. And my understanding is that, you know, no department is perfect, and that's not what this is about. As, as you shared, there's another department that is close, that is under, technically under the two percent, but has a plan and has communicated that plan, has attended the departmental meetings, and has demonstrated that they will soon be above the two percent, correct?
That's correct. They've got one year to get there, or they'd be in the same situation in front of this board.
Thank you. And my next question is, how is every department, including the sheriff's office, held accountable for their budgetary decisions?
Well, they're, they're accountable to this board, and they're, they're accountable to the organization as a whole. We look at the entire organization as a board of directors, where every department head plays a pivotal role in the overall health of the county. So we hold them accountable for their, for their budget and their spending.
And thank you. And this includes other elected department heads?
Oh, absolutely.
The treasurer's office, the comptroller's office, the assessor county clerk recorder chief elections office, correct?
Absolutely, every department.
Thank you. And so I want to ask specifically about the oversight procedures that will be implemented once this resolution passes. Can, Mr. Mankia, would you mind sharing a little bit more about that?
I think it's going to really be on a monthly monitoring from our office, where we will be monitoring each of the accounts individually to make sure that they're within a range of spending. We will be having obvious conversations with the sheriff and staff to make sure that our understanding is not off base. The idea is not to impact operations whatsoever, so it's not the day-to-day operational functions of the things that are going on in the sheriff's department. I think that the early process of being involved in the contract side would give us a little bit of light into a couple of things. But again, it's not to impede or be, you know, even a drag on the idea of getting something approved or move forward.
And I do think it's important to, to stress what Mr. Mankia just said. We would be, of course, wanting to make sure that the oversight does not impact the sheriff's ability to exercise her constitutionally mandated powers and functions. It's, the board does set the budget. It's up to the sheriff to, once the money is allocated, to utilize the funds that have been allocated to exercise her, her powers as, as set forth. So I think Mr. Mankia's point about not interfering in sort of the operations, and frankly, operational decisions about how money ought to be spent, assuming the money's been allocated, assuming the money is there.
And it would also give us an opportunity for Mr. Mankia to work with the sheriff's office to get them back in the black and get them to the point where they, they have adequate reserves.
Thank you. And do we have any concerns about the CFO actually getting access to the, the accounting of the sheriff's office?
Well, to, to date, we, we really haven't had that insight. So we would certainly hope that every contract was viewed by the CFO, and, and so we have better insight into how their, how their funding's being set, spent, so that we could set up a, a plan to get them, to get their reserves back up and to an adequate level.
Thank you. And I have one more question, and then I'm happy to hand it back over to the president. I heard CEO Callagie share several examples of items that he has recommended to this board, even at times that have been met with a lot of hesitance from this board to support the sheriff's office. Is that, that's correct?
I can honestly say I've done more for this sheriff's office than I've done for any department that I've worked with in, in this county.
Thank you. I, I believe that is true, and I have been skeptical of that along the way. And I specifically remember the meeting where we approved the double overtime. It was in the old chambers. And I was very skeptical of investing county funds in that way and thinking that it would solve a retention problem. And the sheriff was there and spoke directly to this board and asked for the board to approve the item. And if she was unsure of what that item was, how it would work, how it would be implemented, she should not have done so. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Spear.
I just want to make it clear that we've already passed a resolution that will require us to review, to review every contract in the county that is sole sourced over ten thousand dollars and every goods contract that is under two hundred thousand dollars. We are going to be receiving quarterly reports. This is not, this is. This is not, um, this is primarily one of the responsibilities of the Board of Supervisors. And so what we're doing here is consistent with what our obligation is to, uh, make sure that all the expenditures are both appropriate and that sole source contracts are, are reluctantly provided. Frankly, in Los Angeles County, every sole source contract of over $5,000 has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors. We're only asking for a report after the fact for those contracts over $10,000. So, um, this is part of our responsibility. It's certainly part of this, um, county executive's responsibility. And, um, I think it's very important that we take action today on this.
Okay. Are there any, um, additional, uh, questions? Okay, you have comments after?
We'd like one moment to respond.
One minute?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give me one. Thank you.
There's a dispute in the facts and we just had a trial that all this stuff was proven. So the board should put this over for another date so that we can explore all the facts and what was proven, and then the board can make its decision with, uh, the appropriate information.
And the $10 million that was taken out to pay for the 330 Bradford Street put us at $3 million and on top of it with the double overtime. If you go back, Mr. Callagie, and watch the video from when you did say, Mr. Mueller asked you, did, would we make sure the sheriff is whole? And you said yes. There was no discussion about the difference in regular overtime or double overtime. That came much, much later when the bill came. And I will tell you that, uh, the undersheriff attends those meetings. Uh, I do not attend the meetings, but my undersheriff attends the, uh, the leadership meetings, um, that you host on a monthly basis. And I just need to call out, um, the, um, I need to call out Supervisor Corzo. As I'm sitting here, she is giving me dirty looks. It is unprofessional of you as a Board of Supervisor to be doing that to me. Have some respect.
Thank you, Sheriff. Are there any additional, uh, questions?
I would like to know, sorry, the chair. I would like to know, are we paying for this attorney? This is not related to the litigation. This is budgetary.
If you can answer this, County Niblin, I would appreciate it. Uh, the, the short answer is I don't, uh, the county is not paying for counsel, uh, being provided or who's, uh, attending here with the, uh, the sheriff today.
Thank you.
I don't know if it's through, it's probably through you Supervisor Spear. The sheriff had raised, um, an issue of, uh, potentially looking at continuing this for another time. How do you respond to that? What's the urgency in doing this today?
Uh, I think the urgency in doing it is the fact that, uh, her reserves are less than one half of one percent. So any purchases that are being made should have some oversight. It's not that she can't make these purchases. It's not that she can't run her office. It's that, um, there needs to be oversight. We have the obligation. It is our obligation to make sure that the expenditures are appropriate. Part of that is, is, um, actually housed within the CEO's office, but in the end, we are held responsible. So, um, it's dire. It's a three, it's a three alarm fire and, uh, we need to take action now.
Okay. With that, uh, do we have public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one speaker from chambers, uh, and then we'll take comments from Zoom.
Thank you. I welcome that the board is taking a step towards greater fiscal oversight. It's not just about the questionable purchases. It's really a question of public trust. We're spending taxpayer dollars here. But oversight shouldn't be reactive or driven by headlines. It should be built into the system, proactive and partial and tenuous. I hope we've learned from this lesson. Oversight benefits all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lawrence. Any additional questions, comments?
No additional speakers from chambers. Madam Cook, please proceed.
We do have three hands raised at this time. This is for item seven, Dan Stedding, followed by Sid Young. Dan, please unmute and begin.
Thank you, supervisors. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Great. Hard to, hard to get that all into 60 seconds here. The City of Pacifica City Manager has a $200,000 purchase authority. I would argue that this was extended discussion on an un-agendized item and subject to the Brown Act here. I would also ask that Supervisor Ray Mueller and Supervisor Noella Corzo, um, recuse himself from this discussion. The first one was for, uh, um, uh, Mr. Mueller's written comments to, that the DSA not forget who had arranged for their double overtime. Um, and the second one for page 10 of the federal lawsuit that I've just sent you by Victor O'Neil, where he states that Supervisor Corzo asked plaintiff whether the sheriff could override her boyfriend's failed application with the sheriff's office. Due to a per se disqualification, this angered defendant Corzo and she joined to conspire with defendant Callagie to remove plaintiff. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid Young, followed by X. Sid, please unmute and begin.
Thank you. I live out on the Samathea County coast and when her attorney spoke about explosions, I would just like to say that the public looks to the Samathea County Sheriff's Office for law enforcement, but from June to September, there have been loud explosions along the Samathea unincorporated coast side, including the city of Hapman Bay, which is a contract city with the sheriff's department. And calls do not appear on the coast side dispatch logs. And last week, another loud explosion went off in front of the residence of one of the city council members. And when citizens call in, they get a busy signal after 10:00 PM. So I, whether or not they're buying expensive televisions or anything else, their job is law enforcement and we asked for shot spotters and they haven't provided any way to stop these loud explosions and we're being terrorized on the midcoast. Thank you.
Thank you. X, please unmute and begin.
Yes, I'm no fan of the sheriff and knew there'd be issues if she was elected. However, I agree with Dan that Corzo and Mueller should recluse himself in this issue, especially Corzo, who has shown a great deal of contempt even right now at this meeting with her facial expressions. She's completely unprofessional. It's showing her malice towards the sheriff, um, which shows that she should not be a supervisor and, um, it, it just shows how ghetto she is. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker.
And our last speaker is Tad. Tad, please unmute and begin.
Well, it's obvious by listening to the complete and total hearing that you, your spending is like a bunch of drunken sailors with an unlimited budget. You claim to be fiscally responsible, but I don't find any of that in your statements throughout the day today. For you to be specifically picking on the sheriff's budget and that you want to have inspection of it, she's bound by guidance within her department and it's just absurd that you're attacking her both personally and, uh, as a, as, as the actual duly elected sheriff. And the expenditures that the county has endured through the fraudulent election that you've rigged is unbelievable. I'm asking you guys to reverse course on your actions against the sheriff and correct your actions as duly sworn servants to the, we, the people and stop being ridiculous in your expenditures.
Thank you, Tad. No further speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you so much. I'll bring it back to the board. Yes, Supervisor Mueller.
Kind of counsel, have you heard any reason why I need to recuse myself from this item?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Spear.
Uh, I would like to move the item.
I'd like to second it, um, but I did just want to add some brief comments. I think at the very core of this decision today is public safety. Public safety is what is at, what is what, um, is at the core of this. The budget is not just money. It's about protecting our citizens. It's about providing our officers with the resources they need to do their jobs, um, especially as we know that come next year, every dollar will count. We need to make responsible, uh, budgetary decisions. We sat through a budget item earlier today where we asked many questions. We had a long discussion and we do that with every fiscal, um, item that comes before this board, as we should. It is our responsibility as supervisors. When we passed the four percent reserves policy last year, um, it was, it was a year ago and there was a year in, since that date for any department that was under, uh, the four percent to remedy their, their budget. And the sheriff, and the sheriff's office, just like every other department, had the ability to work with our CFO, with our county executive to get the support they needed to do that. I think the CEO's office has demonstrated a lot of skill, a lot of foresight in keeping our county financially stable and prepared for what's to come. And so this is, this isn't a, a decision that anyone takes lightly. I believe that by moving forward with this action, the CEO will offer and the CFO will offer the necessary support so that we can ensure the future and the fiscal stability of the sheriff's office. And, um, I will just say one more thing. I make contact with anyone that is speaking to me or whose gaze is meeting mine. We're elected officials. It's part of our job to be able to take criticism as I took some just a couple of seconds ago. Um, and I refuse to dignify lies with a response, so thank you so much.
All right, is that a second or?
She did second.
All right, roll call.
I second, yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Sure. Supervisor Spear?
Aye.
Thank you. Supervisor Corzo?
Yes.
Supervisor Mueller?
Yes.
Thank you. And President Kanapa?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Supervisor Gochay being absent.
All right, so I believe, um, that is the end of our, uh, agenda for today, the exception of, um, going into closed session. County Council Niblin, will we be, uh, County Attorney Niblin, will we be coming back?
Uh, I think we may have an item to report out, yes.
All right. With that, we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you. The board is currently in closed session and the time is now 12:03 PM. Starting in about 15 seconds. All right, President Kanapa, we're back in open session. The time is now 1:49 PM and for the record, all the supervisors are present except Supervisor Gochay, so please proceed.
Thank you so much. County Attorney Niblin.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to report out of closed session that the board has given direction to initiate legal action. This was done on a four zero vote with Supervisor Gochay absent. Uh, once the action is formally commenced, the action, the defendants and other particulars shall be disclosed to any person who inquires unless doing so would jeopardize the county's ability to effectuate service of process or otherwise inhibit settlement negotiations. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you very much. And, um, before we leave, I want to thank my good friend Rudy from the Netherlands for being here. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. All the time is now 1:50 PM. The meeting is adjourned.